May I welcome members and the viewing public to this meeting of the City Council. Please can I ask the Monitoring Officer, David Hollis, to announce the housekeeping arrangements. David?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Please may I have everybody’s attention whilst I make a few announcements. Please can I request members of the public to familiarise themselves with the fire safety and evacuation notices displayed in the public gallery. In the event of the fire alarm sounding, please take instruction from the security attendants, who will be here throughout the meeting. Please can I request everyone to switch mobile devices to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting. Today, the meeting will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council’s website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. Photography, video and sound recording of the meeting is permitted, but the Lord Mayor does have discretion to withdraw or suspend this permission if it’s been undertaken in a manner which could capture personal information or if a member of the public participating objects to being recorded. Any member of the public due to speak at the meeting who does not wish to be recorded should say so at the start of their speech and the Lord Mayor will suspend the permission to record their contribution. Finally, please may I request for safety reasons that no recording equipment or any other object is held over the balcony from the public gallery. Thank you.
Thank you, David. I shall conclude these housekeeping announcements by stating that this meeting is scheduled to finish at 5.30pm. But I shall adjourn the meeting at an appropriate point in the proceedings to give members the opportunity to take a comfort break. Item number two, apologies for absence. I have received apologies for absence from councillors Alexi Diamond, Julie Growcott, Malachi Hayby, Gail Smith, Craig Ambelpew. Councillors Mike Travelle and Safia Said are expected to join us later. If not, apologies will be recorded. Are there any further apologies from members? Thank you.
Sorry, Gail Smith?
I included Gail Smith on it, but thank you.
So Curtis Crossall?
Item number three, exclusion of the press and public. There are no items of business on the agenda for the meeting where resolutions may be moved to exclude the press and public. Item number four, declarations of interest. This item of business is to enable the members of the council to declare an interest in any item on the agenda. Does any member wish to declare an interest? Thank you. Item number five, public petitions, questions and statements and other communications. I wish to remind members of the council that we are currently in the pre-election period for the Woodhouse Ward by election on the 28th of November. Guidance on the pre-election rules on publicity was issued to all members on the 16th of October. Publicity includes speeches at any meeting organised by the council to which the public are invited, such as this full council meeting. The normal business of meeting will be conducted including public petitions and questions, members’ questions and debates on motions. However, members must refrain from making speeches or asking supplementary questions which relate directly to the Woodhouse Ward or are about matters that are likely to be locally contentious. Members must also avoid naming or making reference to candidates who are standing at the election. This advice was issued to all members on Monday. May I thank you in advance for your cooperation. Public petitions, questions and statements. This council enables and encourages those who live and work in Sheffield to have a say in the work of the council by allowing public questions, statements and petitions to be presented at its formal decision-making meeting. Our approach is to make decision-making accessible to the public by enabling them to submit questions and make statements at council meetings and to participate in person or remotely, or asked to have their questions or statements read out on their behalf, either by a nominated person or a council officer. For this meeting, we have received the following communications from members of the public: two petitions, no questions on matters relating to items of business on the agenda; three supplementary questions resulting from eight initial questions on matters relating to the remit of full council; one statement. At this meeting, representations can be made in relation to petitions. This will be responded to by the leader of the council or the relevant committee chair. The initial questions received on matters relating to the remit of full council will not be asked at today’s meeting. This is because the questions, together with the responses from the leader of the council or relevant committee chairs, has been published on the council’s website and circulated to all members of the council. However, the supplementary questions that are being received can be asked and responded to at the meeting. The statement received from a member of this public has been published on the council website and circulated to all members of the council. If time allows, this statement can be read out at the meeting. Statements do not require a response, but myself as chair of the meeting, or the leader of the council, or relevant committee chair reserves the right to reply at the meeting. Please note that a period of 60 minutes is allowed in total for ordinary petitions, public questions and statements. The order for receiving public participations within the allotted time is: one petitions, two supplementary questions to the initial remit-related questions and three statements. Can I call upon the chief executive or monitoring officer to announce petitions and may I request the petitioner be brief and keep within their time limit of three minutes? May I also request that members keep within their maximum time limit of five minutes when responding to the petitions? Chief Executive?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I’ve received a paper petition containing 19 signatures calling on the council to install a resident-only parking scheme on Troutback Road. The lead petitioner is Callum Sweet, who wishes to address council. It’s recommended that the petition is referred to the Chair of the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee, councillor Ben Miskell, for a response.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. The residents of Troutback Road are looking to work with the council to find a way forward in tackling the problem of parking on the road. This is an issue that continues to get worse and increases tensions between the residents, the businesses on the road, including those on Abidale Road. Residents constantly find there is nowhere to park. The road is an L shape, with residents of terrace houses and businesses in the South West Centre making up one part and a later extension with businesses Steps and Addington Retirement Living, known as Jacobs Gate. At planning consultations for Jacobs Gate, residents were told they would all have two spaces per household to park to mitigate impact of the development, yet just two spaces for residents were created. All three businesses, including the retirement living, have their own private spaces, however residents are constantly finding that staff members of Steps are parking on the road. Multiple staff members told me that the car park is reserved for certain staff members. Along with this, residents of adjoining properties of Abidale Road are not allowed to park on their road during certain times on weekdays due to bus lane restrictions, so move their cars onto Troutback Road in the evening to prevent getting ticketed the next day. These factors combined mean residents of the terrace houses struggle to find somewhere to park unless it’s the weekend. Adequate access to residents’ homes becomes increasingly difficult for those with children and/or disabilities, and through desperation, some residents are parking in the car park of the South West Centre or on double yellows and accumulating fines. To give context, highway regulations state for new houses with two to three bedrooms, they should have a minimum of two car spaces, five metres per space. Based on the above sizes, Troutback Road currently have 20 spaces in total for 15 properties, and these are shared with additional properties, of course, on Abidale Road. Residents of the terrace houses struggling to get a space have recently started to park on the side of the road within the area of Jacobs Gate. A few residents have been approached by management of the Steps facility and told they cannot park there due to it being a private land, and even threatened that their cars would be towed. There are no signs to suggest that the roadside is private and it still seems to be part of Troutback Road, and there are no signed posted restrictions for the roadside, only for Jacobs Gate private car parks. We ask for some clarity on whether this section of the road has been publicly adopted as openly allowing residents to park on the roadside of Jacobs Gate would be a huge benefit. Our petition suggesting a permit holders-only policy was signed by 13 of the 15 terrace houses on Troutback Road, with another house verbally agreeing later on. The only house not added to the list is a house that’s just been sold and bought by Steps as a rehabilitation facility. We are hoping to work with the council to fine-tune what the permit holders-only policy would look like. We are open to whether you can park for a limited time if you are not a resident, or restricted amount of time you can park for free without a permit, what the permit hours are in place for, etc. We are happy for a limited number of residents of adjoining properties on Abidale Road to be included in the permit holders-only policy. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Councillor Miskell, you have up to five minutes to respond.
Thank you, Callum, for bringing what is a very reasonable petition today that you presented before us. As you might know already, the committee that I chair, the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee, made a decision last week to introduce several measures on Abidale Road just nearby your road that were aimed to improve bus transit times. Now, that is a strategically important step for the city as we work towards reducing congestion, supporting economic growth and offering people more choice about how they move around the city. And that’s a decision that is part of a broader effort led by South Yorkshire’s Mayor Oliver Copard on bus franchising, which is set to transform our public transport network. Given this, that was the only right thing to do as we prepare the city for the future. However, in making that decision, the committee did remove a small number of parking spaces on Abidale Road, and that was a necessary step to meet our citywide priorities. But we’re aware of your concerns that you’ve raised about parking availability on Troutback Road, and your petition highlights those longstanding parking pressures that have been highlighted by residents, and I do understand those concerns. And as you have said today, 13 out of 15 households have supported your position with regards to a resident parking scheme. After speaking with my colleagues on the committee and consulting with transport officers, I’ll be recommending to the Lord Mayor that this petition is referred back to the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee for further consideration. Now, the issue that you’ve raised is clearly felt by many different residents in your neighbourhood, and it’s important that we explore potential solutions to mitigate the issue, including the potential of a limited parking scheme. And as I’m sure that you’ll understand, this is not necessarily the forum for those detailed policy decisions and discussions to be made, but we are receptive to your request and encourage you to continue attending our committee meetings. We would welcome your ongoing engagement as we work together, hopefully, on this matter. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Miskell. We now go to the second petition?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I’ve received a paper petition containing 217 signatures calling on the council to restore the winter fuel allowance for pensioners. The lead petitioner is Alastair Tyce, on behalf of the Trade Unionist and Socialist Coalition, who wishes to address council. It’s recommended that the petition is referred to the Chair of the Strategy and Resources Policy Committee and Leader of the Council, councillor Tom Hunt, for a response.
I’m presenting this petition today on behalf of the Trade Unionist and Socialist Coalition, the left-wing anti-austerity and anti-war party that opposes cuts whether from Tory or Labour administrations or indeed from unofficial coalitions of Labour, Lib Dems and the Greens. Despite the new Labour government saying that there will be no return to austerity, their cold-hearted decision to cut the winter fuel allowance of up to £300 from nearly 10 million pensioners in Britain is a callous austerity policy. Pensioners in Britain already get the lowest state pension in Western Europe, and with the government allowing the gas and electricity prices charged by the privatised energy companies to go up by another 10%, many pensioners really will face the choice of heating or eating winter. Age UK estimate that 2.5 million pensioners are already in fuel poverty, and this will make things worse. The cuts in the winter fuel allowance will only save the government £1.5 billion a year. Yet if all the pensioners eligible for pension credit that haven’t yet claimed it, it would cost the government £2.2 billion extra. So why are the Labour government doing this? For no other reason, in my opinion, in order to prove to the establishments and the money markets that they will make the tough decisions and the hard choices, tough and hard on pensioners, that is. Now, I’ve heard Labour councillors here tell me that this is justified because why should we be paying it to rich pensioners who don’t need it? Pensions are a universal benefit. Once it’s not, there’s only one way it’s going to go. I say, if you’re so bothered about the rich not getting what they really need or deserve, then why doesn’t your Labour government tax the super-rich? Like the 50 richest families... Like the 50 richest families in the UK who own £500 billion between them, the same amount as the poorest 50% of the population in this country. Now, an estimated 75,000 pensioners in Sheffield are affected by this cut. This petition is calling on you, Sheffield City Council, to use and, if necessary, extend your household support fund or similar funds to restore the £200 or £300 lost to pensioners in Sheffield requiring it. To my knowledge, Tower Hamlets Council in London, Barnsley Council in South Yorkshire have done something along these lines. And last week, I think Rotherham Council announced that they were introducing a winter hardship fund. So if they can do it, why can’t you do it? Don’t say you don’t have the money. Despite all the Tory Liberal coalition and then Conservative government austerity cuts, Sheffield City Council still has half a billion pound in reserves, so don’t tell me you can’t afford it. If you really want to protect the people of Sheffield like you say you do, then you will make the hard choice of refusing to carry out any more government cutbacks, and you can start by restoring the winter fuel allowance for those pensioners in Sheffield who’ve lost it. If you don’t, I’ll warn you now, in two years’ time, there’ll be a lot of mini-trumps in this council chamber.
Thank you. If I could refer this to councillor Tom Hunt to respond. Councillor Hunt?
Thank you very much, Alastair. Thanks for coming in and sharing the petition. The change to the winter fuel payment was a necessary one because, as you well know, the previous Tory government made commitment after commitment about where they were going to spend money without actually having that money leaving, as I’m sure you will know, a £22 billion black hole in the public finances that has been left to the Labour government to sort out. I’m sure that everyone here and Tusk will join me in welcoming the fact that the winter fuel payment will continue to support those who are most in need. And I’m sure that you and colleagues in Tusk will also welcome the fact that in the budget last week, the household support fund was extended for a further year to enable councils to continue to provide support to those who most need it. We are working in partnership with Citizens... Thanks, you’ve had to say. Your colleagues will no doubt welcome that we’re working in partnership with Citizens Advice and the DWP to make sure that we do everything we can to increase the uptake of pension credit. And this council has written out to over 7,000 households who we’ve identified that are in receipt of housing benefits or council tax support but currently not receiving pension credit. And we’ve seen an uptick in people coming forward to make an application for pension credit as a result of that proactive work. And I’m sure you’ll join me in encouraging any pensioners who may qualify for pension credit to come forward, have a conversation with our cost of living team so that we can help provide those who need the support with it, and we’ll continue to use the household support fund in that way. I’m sure that also signatories in the petition, also colleagues in Tusk, will welcome the fact that the triple lock-in state pensions have been retained, which will boost incomes for people receiving state pension, 12 million pensioners, by an additional £470 this year. S and R Committee will be considering this matter at its December meeting. Your petition will be referred to the committee, so we’ll be able to have another look at this issue then, and I would welcome you and colleagues to continue to engage with us. And please do encourage people who you think might be entitled to pension credit to get in touch, because we really want to make sure that people who need the help are getting it, and it would be great to have the support from colleagues right across the chamber in assisting us with that. Thanks very much for coming in today.
Thank you, councillor Hunt. We shall now move to questions and statements from members of the public. May I ask that participants be as brief as possible when asking their questions or making statements, and keep them to the content they have submitted in writing in advance of the meeting. May I also ask that members keep their responses short and succinct. This is to ensure that as much time as possible is available for all public questions and statements, and for the other items of business on the agenda for today’s meeting. Thank you in advance for your cooperation. If I could ask Julie Perne to come to the microphone to ask your question. Thank you, Julie.
Good afternoon. On the 29th of October 2024, in a welcome move, a declaration of friendship was signed between the cities of Sheffield and Nablus, quote, “to promote friendship, understanding and exchange experience and knowledge. I hope this bond will strengthen empathy in all our communities with Palestinians throughout Palestine who suffer daily humanitarian catastrophe at the hands of the Israeli occupation, illegal occupation. Peace, friendship and understanding begin with respect, valuing all lives as equal.” Will the city of Sheffield give a first concrete expression to its declaration and fly the Palestinian flag on November 29th, United Nations Day of Solidarity with the Palestinian People? Thank you.
Thank you. If I could ask councillor Hunt to respond?
Thank you very much, Julie, for coming today. Thank you for your question. Hopefully, you got the first response that was provided a few days ago. As I think colleagues will be aware, earlier this year, Sheffield City Council adopted a new flag protocol for the flying of flags, and in line with that protocol, I have requested that the chief executive follow the procedure when considering the request that has come in to fly the Palestinian flag on the 29th of November. We will keep you informed, and other members here today, about that process that will now play out, and we will come back and give information about that in due course. I’m really pleased that you mentioned the friendship agreement that the city has signed with Nablus. I was really proud and privileged to be at the signing ceremony, along with the Lord Mayor and other group leaders here in the council, last week, and to join Mayor Shakshire and other members of the Nablus municipality for a really positive conversation about how both ways we can extend the hand of friendship between Sheffield and Nablus. You know, we’re very clear that this is between the two cities, not just between the city council here and Nablus municipality, and I know that there are already conversations taking place about what more can be done to strengthen the links, and I think you and others are involved in a concept that’s taking place in Crooks later this month, which is a really good example of the way in which those bonds of friendship are beginning to be formed and can further be deepened, and I know that there’s a live link-up plan for that ceremony. We’re looking to do what we can to explore options for further expressing our solidarity and friendship, and would welcome any further contact from yourself and others about ways in which we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hunt. Question number two is Annie Ogara. Could you come to the microphone, please, Annie? Nice to see you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. My question relates to the power of discretionary exclusion which exists within the provisions of public contract regulations. Discretion means the freedom to decide, in the light of one’s own values, what should be done in any situation. You say that Sheffield City Council operates, quote, “at all times in line with our values”. Sheffield City Council’s PQQ of 2018 said this about grave misconduct which can trigger discretionary exclusion, quote, “To be considered grave misconduct, the matter does not have to have been established by a judgment which has the force of raised judicata. The authority will consider any cogent evidence”, end of quote. Yet in your reply to my first question, you emphasise raised judicata, referencing courts naming of companies, and seemingly minimising your own power to exercise discretion. The International Court of Justice ruled that the occupation is unlawful, that there is evidence of genocide, and that countries must not provide aid or assistance to Israel. Those who invest in and underwrite the weapons trade, slaughtering and maiming thousands, do provide aid and assistance to Israel, like Barclays, complicit to the tune of billions of pounds in the arms trade. Your powers of discretion are greater than you choose to exercise regarding Barclays, a complicit and compromised bank, and you have refused even to express concern to Barclays. So which moral values permit the council to prop up a bank that props up genocide by supporting the arms trade?
Thank you. Councillor Hunt, if you’d like to respond, please?
Thank you very much, Annie, for coming. I’ll repeat what I put in the first answer. We act at all times in line with our values and with the council’s ethical procurement policy, and we will continue to do so. The ethical procurement policy will be updated and brought back to the Strategy and Resources Committee later in this municipal year, and we will continue to act in accordance with it. On the specific points you mentioned around the PQQ, I’ll ask that we provide a further written reply to pick up that point, but I am absolutely clear that we are acting in line with our values and with the ethical procurement policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Hunt. The third question is from Jonathan Feldman. Good afternoon, Jonathan. You may go ahead.
Thank you. My question related to ensuring, and a concern I have as a Jewish citizen of Sheffield, that the council has the best possible policy to combat antisemitism in exactly the same way as I hope the council would want, the best possible policies to combat any racism, including Islamophobia. The response that I had said that the IHRA working definition was widely adopted, and it quoted quite selectively from that definition. So my supplementary question is as follows: that it is disingenuous to quote from the IHRA without reference to the examples in it. Most of these associate antisemitism with criticism... Most of these associate antisemitism with criticism of Israel and have quite clearly played a role in the political discourse. First, how does the council know that the IHRA has not stifled debate? There is plenty of evidence, for example, from the European Legal Support Centre, and there is a port with a link in my written response, that people are worried about accusations of antisemitism in any institution where the IHRA has been adopted. And in this council, the council referred themselves to the IHRA when they asked Julie, Julie Purn here, to stop speaking at a meeting. It took months and the intervention of a legal letter before the council backtracked. And second, the Jerusalem Declaration on Antisemitism, it is an improved version, leaving no doubt that criticism of Israel per se is not antisemitic, in contrast with the IHRA where the examples are used to stifle comment as described above. To say that the IHRA is widely adopted is a defensive position that also seeks to limit discussion. Capital punishment was also once widely adopted. Why would the council not seek to review and improve its policies?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Feldman. I'm going to ask this question with response from councillor Hunt.
Thank you very much, Mr Feldman, for coming today. Thank you for asking the first question and then the supplementary today. I think with the new system, members won't see the first question. So I think I will just provide a little bit of context to the first question, which is in my answer. So Sheffield City Council, as Mr Feldman and others will know, adopted the IHRA definition in 2019. And whilst we're aware that the definition is subject to a substantial debate, the council, as was clear in my answer, remains committed to the IHRA definition and don't believe that it's limited political discourse within the council. The IHRA definition has been widely endorsed by various governments, institutions, and organisations worldwide, making it the commonly referenced standard for recognising and addressing antisemitic behaviours. The UK government, European Parliament, the EU Monitoring Centre on Racism and Xenophobia, and the UK College of Policing have all formally adopted the IHRA's working definition of antisemitism. So we alone are not, we are certainly not alone in adopting the IHRA definition. Of course, and I'm saying that, you know, whilst we, whilst we all, Mr Feldman.
Sorry, can you not call out? Let councillor Hunt give his response, please.
Thanks, Mr Feldman.
No, sorry, Mr, can you please let councillor Hunt respond?
Whilst we're aware that there is clearly contested views on this and that there is some debate around it, what I'm saying is we remain committed to the IHRA definition of antisemitism. I do find that, you know, the backdrop to this is it's somewhat disappointing to be having to have this conversation when the backdrop is, in the broader picture, last year we saw a rapid increase in the reporting of both antisemitism and Islamophobia. And I'm sure colleagues will welcome the fact that November is Islamophobia Awareness Month, when this issue is more important than ever to have in our minds. The fear, anxiety, and the harm that this causes on our society is a stain, frankly. So this council stands against and works to eliminate all forms of discrimination, harassment, victimisation, and actively seeks to foster good relations between people, between communities in our city, especially when there is division and at times when this is challenging. And I think this is a particular moment when it's really important that we remember that everything we do, our words matter, and we must do all we can to unite people, not to divide them. So thank you for coming and thank you for acknowledging that there is contested views on this, but our position is very clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Hunt. We now move on to statements. Could I ask Paul Wimperney to come to read his statement? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Since October 2023, even when in receipt of a petition signed by 7,500 people, the council has taken no meaningful action to recognise the suffering of the Palestinian people. It insisted that to declare Sheffield an Israel apartheid-free zone would be merely symbolic. In reality, many organisations, like Amnesty International, for instance, have seen the point in labelling Israel an apartheid regime. Furthermore, in July 2024, the International Court of Justice ruled that Israel is also in breach of the Convention on the Elimination of Racial Discrimination. We refute, therefore, that any actions taken would be symbolic only. They would have a persuasive moral force. Other pertinent suggestions: Demand Barclays Bank withdraws investments in the Israeli arms trade or change banks. Urge the South Yorkshire Pension Fund to divest from companies with Israeli interests. Offer advice to all Sheffield businesses regarding the legality of trading with Israel at this time. Fly the Palestinian flag above the town hall on the 29th of November, which is the International Day of Solidarity with the Palestinian people, as Rotherham Council proposes to do. Sheffield City Council has to decide whether it opposes injustice or seeks merely to appease those who justify apartheid and genocide. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to item number six, which is members' questions. There is a maximum time limit of 30 minutes for the whole item of business. Item 6.1 is questions on urgent business. I have received a request from councillor Shafak Mohammed, who wishes to ask a question arising from the announcements made by the Chancellor of the Exchequer in her Autumn Budget Statement on the 30th of October. In accordance with the provisions of Council Procedure Rule 16.6, I propose to grant permission for councillor Mohammed to ask his question, which will be answered by councillor Tom Hunt, the leader of the council. My view is that the question represents urgent business that needs to be dealt with at today's meeting. Councillor Mohammed.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. My question, Lord Mayor, to councillor Hunt, is: What representation will the council make to government on behalf of local partners, including charities, care providers, and hospices that are facing unsustainable cost increases due to the rise in national insurance contributions for employees announced by the Chancellor in her most recent budget? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mohammed. Councillor Hunt.
Thank you, councillor Mohammed, for your question. The rate of employer national insurance contributions has risen by 1.2 percentage points, and I'm sure you know, to 15%. This was a decision taken by the Chancellor in last week's budget as part of a package of measures to provide stability to the public finances. We're awaiting further detail, but it is worth, the government has chosen to protect small businesses by increasing the employment allowance to 10,500, doubling the allowance and expanding this to all eligible employers. And the OBR, Office for Budget Responsibility, expects 250,000 employers to gain from these changes and an additional 820,000 who will see no change. With regards to the specific point you mentioned, I'm very happy to have a conversation with employers from across the city who want to talk to the city council about the changes to inform, to enrich their understanding of the changes they're facing. And I'm sure that colleagues from across the chamber would be very happy to have those conversations, too.
Thank you, councillor Hunt. Item 6.2 is supplementary questions. Written answers to questions submitted by members in advance of the meeting have been emailed to all members, circulated at the meeting, and published on the council's website. Those questions were to leader of the council or any policy committee or subcommittee or regulatory committee chairs or to members appointed by the council to serve on the South Yorkshire Joint Authority, the South Yorkshire Mayor or Combined Authority, or to any other body or joint committees. This item of business is to provide an opportunity for members who have submitted questions to ask one supplementary question for each question asked. I will now go on to page number one. Councillor Rice.
On question number one, I'm going to start off easy for you. Why?
Thanks very much. Good to see you, Rob. It was a Lib Dem motion. I've got a job to do with leading the council. And I'll just remind colleagues that I have been in countless meetings with the Lib Dem group leader, Lib Dem councillors for across the last two months. Not once has this been brought up. Not once has this been raised with me about a discussion, about a joint statement. No conversations. My door is always open. Very happy to have a conversation.
On question two, you actually reminded this during the Strategy and Resources meeting in October. So I ask again, why haven't you written that letter?
Salam, Mohammed. Thank you, councillor Hunt.
We need to have a conversation amongst the group leaders. I think you'll see that what it says, 'Group leaders sign a joint letter to the Chancellor of the Exchequer.' This was a Liberal Democrat motion. Very happy to have conversations with the Liberal Democrats about it. They have not been forthcoming.
Thank you. Councillor Rice.
Question number three. Just off the top of your head, what would you like to be put in the letter as leader of the council?
I'd be very happy to congratulate the Chancellor for extending the Household Support Fund so that we're able to provide support to vulnerable households through this winter. Very happy to talk about the measures that we have put forward to help. You may recall me saying a minute ago that we've written out, and I think you'll probably welcome this, to over 7,000 households in this city who are in receipt of housing benefit or council tax support but who do not receive pension credit. So far, we've seen people coming forward as a result of receiving that letter, which I really welcome because that's going to make sure that people are providing, getting the extra help that they need this winter. And I'd be very happy to talk to the Chancellor about that work. Very happy to talk about the way in which, in the budget last week, we saw a significant boost to local government finances across the piece and, you know, engage in a conversation, as grownups would do, around support between local and national government. So there's a range of things I'd be happy to talk about in that letter. But let's have a conversation, shall we?
Thank you.
On question number four. If I showed a lack of initiative like this at work and took two months to write a letter that should only take a couple of minutes, I would be reprimanded. So I'm wondering whether this is a lack of, the lack of letter is a signifier of incompetence on behalf of the leader of the council or whether it is another bit of willing disregard for the wishes of this council and by extension, the public?
Councillor Hunt.
I think I've answered it.
Thank you. Page one, councillor Who?
Thank you for your answer, councillor Hunt. However, it does not actually answer the question I asked, which you seem to be in a habit of doing. Therefore, please, can you advise whether you believe the actions of the Israelis in Palestine to be of committing a genocide? A simple yes or no will suffice this time.
Thanks very much. You and I have had exchanges here before where we have both, I think, agreed that neither of us are international lawyers. And it is right that international law plays out through institutions, respected institutions, like the International Court of Justice, which is well placed to be able to rule on that. And that is the appropriate way in which we will make a ruling on this. There is an interim ruling that's been made. International law must always be upheld and breaches must be investigated swiftly and fully. So I think, you know, that's my answer. Very happy to continue the conversation.
Page two.
It is, it is great to see that Sheffield council has signed a friendship agreement with the occupied Palestinian city of Nablus last week. Therefore, given that friendship with Nablus, will you, as the leader of this council, be in support of raising the flag of Palestine in solidarity with their resistance against the terrorists of Israel? Or does the agreement only amount to gesture politics? Again, a simple, one-sentence answer will suffice.
As I said to Julie, who's now left, that I've requested that the chief executive consider this request in line with our flag protocol. And I think, had you been in the room last week, as your group leader was, you would have heard that it was a meaningful conversation with the leaders of Nablus. And I think it's quite offensive to describe that as gesture politics. This is about extending the hand of friendship to our partners in Nablus. And if you've got good ideas that you would like to see coming forward about how we can deepen that connection, I'd be glad to receive them from you.
Thank you. Page two. Page three. Councillor Gilbert.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, Tom Hunt, for your answer to my question on moorland burning. I'm very glad to see that you are still concerned about moorland burning. And I look forward to hearing the results of your conversations at the next meeting, if possible. May I ask, will you be able to ask the ministers why no action has been taken against apparent illegal deep heat burning on Bradfield Moors in October 2023 and March 2023, despite being logged with DEFRA? And why enforcement action against illegal burning in October 2020 at the same location has apparently been ineffective as a deterrent? Thank you.
Thank you. Well, as I said, you know, looks to have those conversations. But you will note that none of those dates were when the Labour government was in power. So they took place under the last government. But in conversations with DEFRA, in conversations with DEFRA, then I think it would be right and appropriate to look at incidences of the kind you raise. If you want to provide me with further information about them, I'd be happy to take a look.
Thank you. Page three, councillor Bellfield.
Thank you for your response, councillor Hunt, about the local government conference and the update from there and for providing in particular a copy of the speech by Angie Rayner, our deputy prime minister. And it was encouraging to read what she said about the ambitions for delivering affordable homes. So my question is, is the leader able to update further on any recent developments that will help meet those ambitions and ensure that Sheffield is a city on the up? Or, as I like to say, the ale?
Councillor Hunt.
Thank you very much. So, yes, in the budget last week, members, I'm sure, will have been pleased, as I was, to see that there's an extra £500 million allocated to affordable house building, that there are going to be restrictions on the discounts that are provided for right-to-buy sales, and that councils like ours will be able to receive 100% of the receipts from any right-to-buy sales. These are all practical measures, which, along with a five-year rent settlement, will really help councils like ours with housing revenue accounts to be able to provide extra stability for that. Sheffield is one of the signatories to a cross-council initiative around the future of council housing. And myself and councillor Johnson, who I can see over there, were in Harrogate and were able to hear the deputy prime minister's announcements. We've both been part of conversations with other councils around the work that we are doing to secure the future of council housing. And I know that we have cross-party agreement on the positive moves that have been taken. I can see the Green leader and Chair of Housing nodding, which is encouraging, given that the later Green amendment looks like it might have a different approach. So, you know, maybe we can get to a different place later on. But it's good to know that we've got good support from the Chair of Housing there, that things are moving in the right direction. And we've got a government that is committed to working with councils to increase social and affordable housing for the first time in a long time. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Page four. Councillor Aladah.
Thank you. Once again, I haven't received a straight answer. But thanks for accepting that Sheffield council does appoint its members into the South Yorkshire Pensions Authority. It seems you also agree with me, there's nothing legally stopping the council from making a statement to encourage divestments from supporting the Israeli genocide in Palestine. I think it's just a matter of political will that you don't seem to have for some reason. Thank you.
I'm not really sure there was a question there, but very happy to confirm that we don't have direct influence over the pension funds administered by a certain pension or authority. Members are elected by this body. The council's AGM, which took place in May this year, they're not appointed by this council, and the information is set out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Page five.
Thank you. Given that councillor Julie Growcutt is not here today, can I ask a supplementary on her question to the leader?
So on page five, that's where I was. I just didn't know whether councillor, okay, you don't want to ask a supplementary, yeah, that's fine, no worries. I was looking at councillor Who. That's fine, no worries. Yeah, of course.
I will gladly wait if.
No, 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 I was just making sure that he wasn't going to put his hand up or raise it before.
Not on this occasion, thank you.
That's fine. Councillor Hurst, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you Tom for the, for the response given to the question about mitigating the consequences of the decision to curtail the winter fuel allowance to pensioners. Can I ask as a supplementary, the council has sent a letter out to those who may qualify for the means-tested winter fuel allowance from the Household Support Fund, the cost to the Household Support Fund. Can I ask what other actions it's going to take to ensure that those individuals who could qualify and hence reinstate their position do actually put an application in?
councillor Hunt.
I think so far, I think it was two weeks ago that that letter was sent out, and as you'll see, there have been people coming forward since then. I think it would be right to give a period of time to assess the effectiveness of that before deciding on any further steps. As I mentioned earlier on, this matter is coming back to the Strategy and Resources Committee in December, and a further update can be provided then.
Page six. Page seven. Thank you councillor Masters.
Thank you lord mayor. For question one, the question asks how much additional revenue has been delivered. It doesn't answer that, but it does make clear that even the amount billed is subject to exemptions and disputes. Would you please provide the figures for the amount received to date and how much the amount you quoted has been reduced by exemptions and held up in disputes with the additional costs allowed for officer Tanus to administer this? Thank you.
councillor Nas.
Thank you. Thank you. I will get that additional, I don't have that information on hand with me, so I will get that additional information for you. Councillor Masters.
Thank you. Page seven.
Yeah, still continuing. I mean, sort of, you know, the answer, and really it's a combination.
Sorry, which question?
It's, it's the questions two, but it's really the questions two, three, and four, I'm summing them up.
Okay, so you're going to ask, just so, you know, you've got one supplementary.
One supplementary on the rest of my questions on this topic.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. The answer says a quarter of the budget is given to this one landlord, Greenbridge. If there are 67 other providers, they get an average of £300,000 each. How confident is the council this represents value for money from all the reports that we've been getting?
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Nas.
Thank you. Thank you. Exempt accommodation is used nationally where people can self-refer to exempt-supported accommodation. If the provider is a council or housing association, regulation is in place from the regulator of social housing. So for most of the people who are using this accommodation, it would be self-referral. They'll be referring themselves to the service. We sometimes make referral to Greenbridge for individuals with mental health needs, but the vast majority of tenants using Greenbridge accommodation are tenants that self-refer.
Thank you. Page eight. Thank you councillor Who. Question one, I presume.
Thank you.
Didn't see, sorry. I did look. Can I just take councillor Elliot first, please? Then I'll come to you.
Thank you lord mayor. So a question for councillor Nas, you won't be surprised I'm asking this because I asked about it on the finance committee in 22 and 23. So Electric Works is supposed to be an income source of the council, but it's actually losing about half a million a year because it's not let. So a quick question, rather than being empty, has thought gone into using it for council staff to work there?
Thank you councillor Elliot. There is a lot of work that is happening in that area. Electric Works was first, the foundation of Electric Works was to build a place for digital business. That has now been broadened and expanded. There are conversations around, you know, how we can broaden that scope even further. So then conversations are ongoing and a lot of work is being done in that area to look at it.
Thank you councillor Who. Thank you for your patience.
No problem. Thank you councillor Nas. Just question, on question one first, I know the Labour Party gets a lot of their answers through back channels. So are you able to give any indication whatsoever if public bodies will be exempt from this increased tax?
We have strong indications to indicate that that is probably likely the case, that local authorities are going to be getting compensation for NI contribution for employers. But we won't know until December, to be honest.
Page nine.
Question six. It is distressing to see that the chairs, that chairs are not answering questions that have been asked of them, as happened earlier and as has happened here. Therefore, I will ask again, what is the ratio between the highest and the lowest-paid members, not the average pay, but the lowest-paid members of staff at an FTE of one?
Thank you councillor Who. Yeah, this has been worked out as an average cost. I will ask officers to come back to you because the information required is a bit more technical and I will ask them to come back and give a, provide a response for that. But the way they worked it out on this was the median salary rather than the lowest.
Page nine.
And just on the final question, question seven, please can you advise on a specific date as to when this information will be given to the people? They are important and should not be kept waiting many weeks.
I agree, and as soon as we've got the information, we'll share that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Page 10. Thank you councillor Aladah.
Thank you. It's very common for the public, believe it or not, to not trust politicians because when we ask a direct question, a very simple question, we don't receive a simple, direct answer in return. I'm asking, why are we not contacting Islington Council to uncover the exact details that made them decide not to renew with Barclay's bank account? Instead, in essence, being ignored with your answer. Thank you.
councillor Nas.
First of all councillor Aladah, I did answer your question last time. Your question was, can the council contact Islington Council? And I said yes. So that was an answer to your question. And secondly, in spite of this, we have, I have made contact with Islington Council. And when I have that information, I will share it and I have asked our finance officer to also contact the finance officer at Islington Council, because I do agree that we do need to know some of that information.
Thank you. Page 11 councillor Parry.
Thank you lord mayor. Thank you Douglas for your answer. It's really concerning that we think at least 500 people, if not more, were made homeless because of no-fault convictions as I said in one notice last year. Will you join me in celebrating the news that no-fault convictions are going to be banned by the new government?
councillor Johnson.
Yeah, well, thanks. I look forward to that. I think it was promised by the last government too. So let's see if this government is as good as the last one.
Page 11. Page 12. Page 13.
Lord mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you councillor Johnson for your response. This is in response to questions one and two just together. Are the average completions of repairs of 25 days, are they taken from completed jobs only? Because I'm not sure how you can be simultaneously turning repairs round in 25 days on average, when half of them are overdue with a name to tackle them in eight months.
councillor Johnson.
Thanks, yes. It's the sort of question that we perhaps better go and ask the officers about how they interpret the statistics. So can you drop me a line and then we'll chase that up? Thanks.
Okay, page 13. Page 14 councillor Masters.
Thank you lord mayor, and thank you to councillor Johnson for the reply. But we've heard that Greenbridge receives a quarter of the budget, yet you state we have no control over how it is spent because of national policy. This situation's existed for some time, we know that. What pressure are you putting on the government to improve oversight of conditions on this, especially when local authority budgets are, especially for the homeless, are so stretched?
Thanks. I think you're talking about the way that housing benefit operates. And of course, housing benefit is administered by the council but is a national set of legislation, very tightly constrained. So all the spending on housing benefit is entirely by national regulations. And it's obviously, you know, we've pointed to the scandal of just how much money the government is subsidising private landlords by. And we talked about 70 billion pounds over five years is going to the hands of private landlords just for ex-right-to-buy houses that are now being rented out. You know, so it's completely bustle myth of right-to-buy benefit in council tenants. That's the background to what we're talking about here. Greenbridge is a company that is able to exploit that quite legitimately. And as you will see, they gain millions of pounds of public subsidy for that. As you say, the housing benefit regulations aren't new, and the particular regulations that apply and are causing a so much problem with temporary housing and exempt housing go right back to 2010 when new regulations were brought in that, you know, generated these caps and, you know, really transformed the system in a very negative way.
Thank you. Page 15.
Thank you lord mayor. So I'm asking you a question as the rep on the South Yorkshire Pensions Authority. Chair, chair of the, okay, all right, even better. Because what I want to ask you about is, first of all, thanks for providing the table of investments in Israel held by the Pension Authority. So actually, we can see now, there are millions of pounds invested by the Pension Authority in Israel, not just in companies operating in Israel, but actually in the Israeli government. We've literally got millions of pounds in there. My question is simply, now you've found that out, are you shocked to find just how much money we're investing in the Israeli government?
Thank you councillor Johnson. I suggest you have a conversation with councillor Diamond, who sits on the board with me, and we have regular conversations about that and detailed responses. We have many questions. As the answer says, this sits within border to coast, it doesn't sit within there. However, we do, I do sit on that. And there is lots of legal work going on right now with the LGPS. And legally, there is, there has been some movement, which I'm very surprised that councillor Diamond hasn't informed you about, because I would have thought you would have done. But never mind about that. I shall make sure that you, I mean, you can actually watch it online as well, if you wish. It's all screened, you know, both numbers screened live. And as the representative on border to coast, I have pushed that public questions are now taken, and they are, and people have been coming and asking these questions. But it isn't something that is at the gift. We do push, we are very, very precocious, but we will act with, we have to act within the legislation. We cannot act within any moral guidance on that. Unfortunately, it isn't that simple. And I really think you should have a conversation with councillor Diamond. Thank you. Page 16. Pages. Thank you.
Thank you for your answer councillor. I'm a bit surprised that Simca seems to think that the question of the Deepcar branch is a matter of speculation. It was published on the 20th of October in Rail magazine, which is sold not only in places like W H Smith but in supermarkets. I make that point because they don't sell things that don't sell. The article was entitled Network Rail Confirms the Change of the Status of the Deepcar Branch. It was mothballed on the 29th of September. That means that there will be no maintenance undertaken on that branch anymore. One of the biggest eyesores in this city now is the very sad remains of Sheffield Victoria Station closed by a Labour government, just for counselling. If that, if that is not dealt with soon, the condition of the assets will deteriorate. Now, you want to put a tram train down there. I remember councillor Miskell's unfunded promise that there will be a tram train to Deepcar. And I know your dislike of unfunded promises. So can you now tell me councillor Hunt, whether we're going to get a tram train, when anything is going to be done about the Deepcar branch, when anything is going to be done at the terrible state of the site of the old Sheffield Victoria Station? Something which could have been done had the government not cancelled restoring your railways, because there was an option in that bid to reopen Sheffield Victoria Station. Thank you.
councillor Hunt.
Wow, old memories die hard. So you'll, you'll know that restoring your railways was about heavy rail, and what we're talking about is light rail. So we're talking about two different things here. We are having conversations with South Yorkshire Mayor or Combined Authority about developing a really ambitious plan to expand our tram network. That comprises of reopening the line that you're talking about out to Deepcar and Stockbridge, but also, as I know you're very keen on, making sure that the Barrowhill Line is also brought back into use so that tram train services run through to south-east Sheffield, into north-east Derbyshire, and through to Chesterfield. The ability to open both lines would ensure that there then is a single continuous route for commuter traffic to be taken off our roads running from the north-west of the city in Stockbridge all the way through to Chesterfield. This is a serious undertaking, and we are working very closely with South Yorkshire Mayor or Combined Authority to ensure that the right vision is put together for this and that we can then have detailed conversations with the department for transport. As the answer says, Simca are aware of the article, and when there is further information from Network Rail, we'd be happy to provide that to you. And I look forward to working with you and colleagues to do everything we can to open up those lines so that we can have tram train services running through them. This would be a significant step change in our public transport in the city and would go alongside the work that's underway to bring our buses back under public control. And I know that that's something that the Lib Dem group will look forward to, working with the Labour group, the Green group, and mayor Oliver Copard to make sure that that happens. Thank you.
Thank you. This will be the final question as we've just about reached the guillotine. Page 17.
Yes lord mayor.
councillor Rice.
I'd first like to apologise for not thanking you for taking a supplementary on my first set of supplementary questions. I'd like to thank you on those, and I'd also like to like to thank you for allowing me to ask supplementary on these. On question one, South Yorkshire Police is the second highest rate of crime per 1,000 population when compared to similar force groups. And it's also got the highest rate of knife and sharp instrument offences per 1,000, 100,000, sorry, 100,000 on both population when compared to similar forces across country. Admirably, has got the third best performance for call average. forces across country. Admirably, has got the third best performance for call average, average answer times when being called. So yeah, the question is, when the sustainable solution to the issue of the 65 million pound black hole comes through, should it be frontline policing regarding the on the street crime, or the back office staff that should be cut as a priority?
The, really important to refer back to the final line of the answer that SIMCA provided to yourself, councillor. Whilst this work is underway, it would be imprudent to speculate on potential implications of this step.
Thank you. That now concludes the item of business. We are going to move on to item number seven, which is notice of motion regarding Make Sheffield a Pedestrian Friendly City. There is a maximum time limit of 25 minutes for this item. May I call on councillor Christine Gilligan-Cubo to move the motion? You may speak for up to three minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We're all pedestrians at some point, whether we're walking or using mobility aids to get to the bus stop, to buy a newspaper, or take our children to school. Walking is simple, free, and one of the easiest ways to get more active, lose weight, and improve our health. Walking briskly can help you build stamina, burn excess calories, and make your heart healthier. And you don't have to walk for hours. A risked 10-minute daily walk has lots of health benefits. Walking in the outdoors is also good for your mental health. Sheffield prides itself on being an outdoor city. To get to the outdoors, you have to leave your house, get off the bus, get out of your car. So if Sheffield is truly to be an outdoor city, it must be a pedestrian-friendly city, too. We want people to visit and enjoy our beautiful outdoors, so it's important we make it easy and safe for them to get around. But the benefits of this motion are not just for visitors. We all want to be able to get around our city and our neighbourhood safely and easily. I want to see well-maintained footways that are not obstructed by advertising hoardings or parked cars. It is not acceptable to expect pedestrians to have to move into busy roads to continue their journeys due to obstructions. I also want to see safer streets so that our children can walk to school. Parents should be able to enjoy a short walk to a local school with their children on safe streets that are not congested with polluting vehicles and dirty air. This will improve the health of our younger generation and encourage healthy habits for the future. There are 357 deaths and injuries each year on Sheffield roads. His Majesty's Inspectorate of Constabulary and Fire and Rescue Services has identified a lack of effective road safety strategies as a major cause of concern. I welcome the development of the Walking Wheeling and Cycling Investment Plan by the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Committee. This is a positive step, but we need a more holistic approach across the council and working with our partners to ensure obstructions such as bins, parked cars, and digital advertising displays do not impede our footways. Pavements are for people, not parked cars, vans, or lorries. Our streets should be easy to navigate for everyone, including people in wheelchairs or using mobility aids, blind or partially sighted people, and residents with young children. Please support this motion.
Thank you. May I call on councillor Ruth Mercer to second the motion? You may speak for up to two minutes.
Thank you. The way that people in Sheffield are able to travel about our city is massively unfair. Many residents are excluded from jobs, from leisure and social activities because they can't get about safely or easily. Remember that nearly a third of Sheffield's residents don't have any access to a vehicle. So making it easier to walk and wheel, for example, use a wheelchair or mobility scooter, is good for mental and physical wellbeing and reduces isolation. But currently, it's often difficult, unsafe, and unpleasant. At last week's Transport Committee, we passed a Walking Wheeling and Cycling Investment Plan, and we heard about the things that stop people walking and wheeling. Top of the list was vehicles parked on pavements. Obstructive parking stops people getting about safely, or even from getting about at all. We urgently need to deal with this and send a clear message that obstructive parking is illegal and socially unacceptable. The poor state of pavements in pass also stops people from getting about. Our current maintenance schedule means that most of the city's pavements are left with leaves, snow, and ice uncleared. And slippery pavements make it risky to get about, particularly on hilly streets. When pavements haven't been gritted, people are forced to walk in the road and put themselves at risk from motor vehicles. Unclear pavements and insufficient enforcement against obstructive parking very visibly transmits the message that people wheeling and walking are at the bottom of the transport hierarchy, when our transport vision and the highway code say it should be our top priority. People are prevented from walking and wheeling because of very valid concerns about road danger. Someone is killed or seriously injured almost every single day on Sheffield's roads. Just think about that statistic for a minute, and its appalling effect on loved ones and others. We must do more to reduce road danger, and we must do better. We urgently need to work across the council's committees and with South Yorkshire Police and SIMCA, because if we enable people to walk and wheel, we can have a city that's cleaner, fairer, safer, and healthier.
Thank you.
And better for everyone.
Thank you councillor Mercer. There are two proposed amendments, and these are numbers one and two on the list of amendments circulated at the meeting. May I call on councillor Ruth Milson to move amendment number one? You may speak for up to two minutes.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. And yet we, I and my colleagues, really do welcome the ambitious spirit of this motion, and do take really seriously the points made just now by councillor Mercer around road safety, something we should all be mindful of and all be working to improve. Pedestrian-friendly areas absolutely without doubt bring cleaner air and healthier life expectancy, especially mindful for our children growing up in polluted areas. We do obviously need to improve that. Walking and wheeling also really good for social interaction, general sense of wellbeing, a sense of shared ownership, pride in our city's public spaces, and a curiosity about what is around us. I think most of us remember going out for walks in lockdown and realising what was under our own noses when we ventured out on foot. It is a shame, though, that this motion avoids celebrating the significant progress we've already made. Maybe a word limit issue, so I'll fill in a few little holes. People are enjoying new pocket parks in the city, including Pound's Park, which is really popular, and often commented on positively, even in the Sheffield Star comments. And pedestrian-friendly enhancements have been brought to our high streets and district shopping centres through our Economic Recovery Fund, which of course is citizen-led and a great project. We're following through on pedestrianising Pinstone Street, which will greatly contribute to the coherent feel of our city centre as a place to be safe and comfortable walking, wheeling, and hanging out. And we've heard and taken very seriously concerns about mobility and accessibility in the heart of the city, introducing the free electric connect buses to get people from one part of the city to another, and also aiming towards a net gain of disabled parking spaces for the city centre, helping to enable access to places where people want to be. Please, let's not also forget the award-winning Greater Green. It seems a long time now since that was first started, the Greater Green Project. But the combined planting in urban drainage looks fantastic, makes people happy, attracts citizens to our city.
Thank you councillor Milson.
And is still expanding with future areas still to be implemented.
Thank you councillor Milson. Can I call on councillor Ben Miskell to second the amendment?
Lord Mayor, I fully support the sentiments made by councillor Milson there, but also many of the comments that were made by councillor Mercer. And actually, it makes me reflect a little bit on something that happened at my last committee meeting of TRC, I think following councillor Sangar's reflection on this long service. I don't know how long that is, but it's perhaps many decades. And I noted how it was positive that we have a broad political consensus on active travel in this city, which I really do think is essential, because to create the sort of real change and offer people that sort of genuine choice that we need in how people travel across our city, we need to bring people along with us on that journey. And that requires us to have the right language to describe improvements on our streets. It means engaging in meaningful engagement with citizens of the city, and ensuring that changes are introduced with a consideration to communities that are affected. But Lord Mayor, I'm proud of the work, like councillor Milson has said, that we're doing in Sheffield to make Sheffield a safer, cleaner, and healthier space for pedestrians. Our efforts are driven by our commitment to open up genuine travel choices for people, to improve air quality, and also to tackle the climate crisis. And that's why we're enhancing the look and feel of neighbourhoods and supporting better health outcomes with what we're doing. And I'm especially proud of the 16 school streets that we have launched in this city, including a new one at Watercliff Meadows Community Primary School in Chai Cliff, and Mundella Primary School in Norton Lees that I opened. And was really pleased to be joined at that opening on the street by councillor Banister. It's been a joy to visit those schools and hear those voices of young people in those assemblies, and see families embrace active travel together, because those young people are incredibly excited about the journey that we are going on as a city. We are, should be incredibly proud of what we're doing, and we're leading on it across Yorkshire.
You've found it much, councillor Miskell. May I call on councillor Tim Huggan to move amendment number two? You may speak for up to two minutes, Tim.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I spend a lot of time walking around this city on foot, whereas the Sunday afternoon stroll around the best of Crooks has to offer, or the local delights of Crossfall and Sandygate is my gateway to the Peak District. Indeed, I am one of the select group of councillors whose entire journey to this meeting from my house has been by foot. I am glad to see the rollout of school streets across the city, particularly after my intervention in council in 2020 led to a more proactive approach by the council rather than until that point just being reactive. As a result, Westway School in Crooks has brought forward as being a success. Missing from the original motion was any particular interest for those of low sight or mobility. Some of the active travel interventions in Crooks were poorly thought out. Indeed, those with visual impairments were guided into planters as a result of that. This is why it's important to consult more appropriately when thinking about how to implement active travel schemes. Now, to Operation Park Safe. Terrible parking in parts of Crooks is a bane of local residents' life. I was more than a little surprised to see the scrapping of the scheme, which was generally popular amongst the residents. It left residents empowered to do something about atrocious parking in road junctions, blocking pavements inappropriately, and hindering bin lorries. This was a short-sighted cut that slightly improved the lives of residents in Crooks. Let's try for the additional funding that should be available through the activities of local residents. Mayor Oliver Copard has consistently told us at meetings that the new government is listening. My ward colleague has consistently intimated that he has back channels to the current government. I'm not the first person to say this, am I? Perhaps he can use those tools. Support the Liberal Democrat amendment and improve the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Huggan. May I call on councillor Andrew Sangar to second the amendment?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And like most of us, woke up this morning with a very heavy head, a very heavy heart, and worried about the next four years. But at least felt glad that I remain a European, and glad that I believe that city centres should be walkable and not a North American view of driving around. It's good that we have broad consensus in terms of encouraging walking, wheeling, and cycling. I think that's the only way we're going to make progress both in this city and in this country, and reach out to the rest of the world in terms of making sure that active travel is something that we do in towns and cities. Lord Mayor, we're broadly supporting the Labour amendment and broadly supporting the Green just the motion, but we had three, three points to make. Firstly, on Park Safe, where clearly whenever you do a survey, inconsiderate parking is one of the issues that come up top. And it was in the lack survey that the council carried out in September 21. So Park Safe was part of the answer. It was allowing people to ring up, to, 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 to report online about inappropriate parking. Really successful scheme, hugely popular, and then the police just withdrew it without any consultation. So really important, our amendment prioritises the return of Park Safe, the return of real action in terms of inconsiderate parking. The second thing is, for those of us who enjoy walking, those of us, we do need to reach out to, to people with disabilities, and in this case, particularly people with visual impairments. So we need to make sure that's covered. And the third point, we do need to learn from the lessons in terms of Crooks Walkley and Never Edge, in terms of as we push for livable neighbourhoods, making sure we, as councillor Miskell has so rightly said, making sure we take people with us. The language we use in this debate is really important. So it's not, it should include everybody. So with that, with that, Lord Mayor, I second the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent timing. I will now move to the debate on the matter. The first councillor I have is councillor Parek. Councillor Parek, up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I really support the spirit of this motion, you know, that we should look to make Sheffield a more pedestrian-friendly city, recognising the wider benefits that this will have for all residents. I'm not a driver, similar to councillor Huggan, and I walk or get the bus or tram everywhere I go. The motion notes that all Sheffielders are pedestrians at some point of their every journey they take, which is true. And it's why we need to take a holistic view of both active and public transport together, as we improve connectivity across the city and region. It's why I'm really pleased that recent changes to public transport in South Yorkshire have seen public bus franchising coming at speed, which will mean more frequent and more reliable bus services, and with the super tram coming under public ownership, which will allow for a more seamless integration between all kinds of transport. We're also seeing, as the amendment notes, some transformational change at a national level, including 650 million pounds for local transport, increased taxes on private jets, that's a great one, and our airways coming back under public ownership. We need to see improvements to make it easier to walk and to use our public transport network, so people can seamlessly switch between our trams, buses, cycling, and walking. I'm glad to say, too, I know Operation Transport has been, Operation Park Safe has been mentioned, that the police and crime panel is working in a cross-party way to seek solutions to the loss of our Park Safe by holding discussions with Oliver Copard and South Yorkshire Police. I look forward to seeing these bear fruit. And as others have said, it's really important that we do talk about the changes that are already happening on the ground to support our movement across the city. Councillor Milson has mentioned the pedestrianisation of Pinstone Street and the free electric connect buses that circle the city centre. I wanted to also welcome the new crossings in my ward in Crooks, one of which has just been made permanent, which are helping to facilitate safe pedestrian access to our busy main road and making young people's routes to school much easier. We're seeing a lot of changes across the city, which are making it easier to move around, reduce air pollution, and lower carbon emissions, which will lead to better lives for all of us, and really to see this motion and the ambition it has.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Parek. Councillor Woodcraft.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Yeah, I very much welcome this motion. But I'd just like to make a cautionary point about low-traffic neighbourhoods. I very much support them, and I doubt anyone would want to live on a road with a lot of traffic for many reasons. Now, in modern housing developments, they, they resolve this problem by getting, by designing the road layouts in such a way that there's not a lot of through traffic past, past residences, so that they resolve it like that. The problem arises when trying to impose low-traffic neighbourhoods on older street layouts that were not designed as such. When you close off one street to through traffic, it becomes displaced to other streets. One man's low-traffic neighbourhood becomes another man's high-traffic neighbourhood. And it usually means that traffic has to take a longer route, which gives a net increase in the nuisance caused, not least to those who live in the low-traffic neighbourhood itself. So, so yes, I'm in favour of low-traffic neighbourhoods, but please be aware that imposing them on older neighbourhoods is not without difficulty. And when you consult, please include those areas where the traffic is going to be displaced to in the consultation. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Woodcraft. Councillor Hove.
Thank you. This is a crucial motion for our beloved Sheffield, as it will prioritise the wellbeing of the great people of Sheffield and visitors alike. We need a change to a pedestrian-friendly environment, as it will help to grow a healthier, more sustainable, and vibrant community. Surely, that is what we all want. I want Sheffield to be a city where people can walk safely and comfortably, where the streets are bustling with life, and where everyone, regardless of age and ability, can enjoy this amazing freedom of movement. Imagine a city where pedestrian safety is paramount. Imagine a city with reduced traffic congestion, lower emissions, and improved air quality. Imagine a city where the simple act of walking becomes a joy, not a risk. This is a Sheffield we should all want to aspire to. We must prioritise infrastructure that supports this vision. This means investing in better pedestrian crossings, better traffic calming measures, and better buses. It means creating green space. It means creating green spaces and pedestrian squares where people can gather, relax and connect. It means ensuring accessibility for all so that our elderly and those with disabilities can navigate this amazing city with ease and dignity. When people walk, they are more likely to discover and support local shops, cafes and markets, as has been happening in Nether Edge and Sharrow, my ward, for many, many years. A vibrant pedestrian culture can breathe life into our economy. I say to fellow members, let us embrace this opportunity to make Sheffield a pedestrian friendly city. Let us build a future where our streets are safe, vibrant and accessible for all. Together, we can create a Sheffield that not only meets the needs of its residents but also sets an example for cities across the country to follow. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hoof. Councillor Basharad, you have up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Along with my colleagues, I also welcome this motion and amendment. And dangerous parking does urgently need addressing. This is a problem across the city and even more so, I get a lot of constituents sharing concerns. Payments should be cleared of obstacles. I've seen the difficulties our vulnerable members of the public face, such as people using wheelchairs, partially sighted and people using prams as well. I just want to also mention that school streets, there's few schools within our ward as well that have actually really worked well and welcome this for having one hour of in the morning and afternoon at the road closure, which was a problem. And we all know the aims of this is to help reduce congestion and improve air quality at the school gates as well as making it easier and safer to walk or cycle to school. And there's many research and reports around, you know, the importance of this. And young people are our future and we need to look out for them and make things safer. I do feel the words rolling out are quite alarming for communities. It's probably better using, working with the communities, residents and businesses. And I welcome with the amendment prioritising a community-led design to ensure money is invested with local needs. Because once you're actually involving and taking the community with you, you would get better results and the schemes would be welcome. Because I don't feel as a community worker...
Thank you councillor Basharad. We have reached the guillotine as well.
I don't think anybody is, doesn't want any of their children, you know, the road is safer for them.
We've now reached the guillotine. If I could... May I offer the right to reply to the move of the motion councillor Christine Gilligan-Cubbo? Two minutes please Christine.
Thank you Chair. I don't think I'll need two minutes. I just want to thank everybody for the cross-party support for this motion. And I'm really pleased that it is something we can all agree on. Look what we can do when we work together. This is a policy for everybody in Sheffield. Everyone is a pedestrian, everyone uses the streets. And all I want to say now is I'm really looking forward to keeping, working together to make this happen. Let's make Sheffield a great place to walk. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm now going to move to the vote on the amendment number one. Moved by councillor Ruth Milson, which will be conducted using the electronic voting system unless we have unanimous support for the amendment. Councillor Otten.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In voting for this, we're against six.
In voting for, we're also voting against six.
Councillor Hurst.
In voting against, we are voting for one, B and D.
Councillor Milson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Amendment one, we're very, sorry, we're only on amendment one. Sorry, force of habit, Lord Mayor.
It's okay. I thought I'd done something wrong. So it's just...
Voting for, it's up to voting for.
Oh, good. Well, you made me laugh anyway. Thank you. Okay. We now move to the, no more, no more. That's okay. Okay, we'll now move to the vote. Mine's mine.
Working.
Not in charge of that bit. There's two people left to vote. Is anybody having issues with their voting? No? Okay, I'm going to call it. We have sixty-nine for the amendment, four against and one abstention. So it's carried in part with part six being lost. We now move on to amendment number two. To the amendment moved by councillor Huggan, which will be conducted using the electronic voting system unless we have unanimous support for the amendment. I can see we have dissent. Councillor Milson.
Okay, genuinely this time, Lord Mayor. Amendment two, we're voting for but abstaining on part four, Roman seven and on part six.
Councillor Fitz.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. So in voting for, we are voting against four.
Anybody else? No? Okay, we'll move to the vote, please. Thank you. The amendment is carried. I'm now going to call for a short comfort break, which I... Oh no, do we have to? Oh, I was doing so well. Right, never mind. Okay, never mind. Do apologise councillor Cub, do apologise. I'm now going to move to the vote on the substantive motion, which will be conducted using the electronic voting system unless we have unanimous support for the motion. Councillor Milson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We're voting for the substantive motion but abstaining on the original letter I, part Roman six. And abstaining on the original part J and also abstaining on part six of the Liberal Democrat amendment which is being passed.
Thank you. Any more? Councillor Hurst.
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. In voting for, we are against any parts of the amendment number one carried with the exception of one B and D.
Thank you. Councillor Otten will be in for nothing at all. We can now move to the vote, please. Thank you. This motion is carried in full. Now going to move to a, do you want to give her an applause since I cut you off last time? We are now going to move to a comfort break, which I am going to extend as all members are invited to have their photo taken down on the stairs. Today is, we're going to be marking White Ribbon Day. So it'd be really great to show solidarity all together. Okay, so I will be extending. That's what I'm going to say. I was about to say if we go and have the photo taken now, we can then have the comfort break straight afterwards. So I want to come back. Twenty minutes, so back at five past four, but I will ring the bell. Thank you. Move on to item number eight, which is notice of motion regarding reaffirming Sheffield's commitment to tackling violence against women and girls and supporting the White Ribbon Campaign. It's not often that I'll actually add anything, but I would really like us all to just be really, really respectful. I think out of all the motions we debate, I think this is probably one that so many members of the public have actually said to me over the last two weeks, I hope you're going to be debating this when I've been out. So let's show ourselves in our best light, which I know we can because we have done today already. Thank you. There is a maximum time limit of twenty-five minutes for this item. May I call on councillor Mark Russling to move the motion? You may speak for up to three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It's bang out the machete, boom in her face and grip her by the neck. Shut up. I inflict, I expect absolute loyalty from my woman. I'm not a rapist, but I like the idea of just being able to do what I want. Three quotes, one man. Andrew Tate. A so-called man who speaks of women as objects. A so-called man who is a sex offender. And a man who is a hero to a large minority of the boys I used to teach on Parsons Cross. His words lapped up through YouTube and TikTok, but it's just banter. Get over it. But Andrew Tate shows us one thing. Words don't stay as words. Words breed contempt and contempt breeds violence. And in Sheffield in the last year alone, nearly 8,000 women and girls have been sexually assaulted, many more violently attacked, the vast majority by men. Men who think that you prove your masculinity by beating up your girlfriend or daughter. Men whose values have been warped and twisted beyond all recognition. Men who believe that Andrew Tate offers the only way of being a man. But we're here to say to men like that, get a grip of yourself. You are wrong. Nearly every community group in Shire Green, Winkerbank and Grimesdorp is run by women. The kind of women of steel I want my daughter to become. So if you are listening to this and you are the kind of man whose sense of masculinity is so very fragile that you feel threatened by Jeanette, Anne, Anne, June, Jane and Margaret, get a grip of yourself. You are wrong. If you're the kind of man who can't last a bank holiday or see your team lose without beating up your girlfriend or daughter, get a grip of yourself. You are wrong. Because being a man isn't wrong. It's being a man like Andrew Tate. So that is why Matt and I are calling on every man in this chamber to get a grip of themselves, stand up and be a real man. Because real men become white ribbon ambassadors. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Russling. May I call on councillor Matthew Dwyer to second this motion? This is councillor Dwyer's maiden speech. What a great one to do it on. You have up to two minutes, Matt, but I will be lenient.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And as this is my maiden speech, I just want to take a moment to thank people at Burleigh for electing me and for my two ward colleagues Karen and Denise for helping me find my feet. I put myself forward for council because I wanted to make the city I live in the best place to live and work. And because the point of this chamber is to make sure it serves the people that it's elected to represent. That is why this motion is important. This week, I think many men probably found out from Saoirse Ronan that using a phone as a weapon isn't just something that happens in spy films, but something women think about every day. It's one of the many changes in behaviour that men, women have to do to feel safe and can sometimes be oblivious to men. Women face violence from men in all parts of their life. This month, the law around sexual harassment in the workplace changed to require employers to take proactive steps to eradicate violence in the workplace. This change was brought about from a private member's vote of Vera Hobhouse MP, supported by trade unions and the third sector and the government at the time for true cross-party working. And it's needed. Half of all working women will experience workplace sexual harassment. The change in the law is a step towards eliminating that violence. For those that don't know, I work for Unison, a union of over one million women who deliver public services across the country. And we're focused on addressing the power imbalances that in work and society, making sure everyone goes to work and is safe. Because they aren't currently. Research carried out this year of our members working in schools showed that one in ten of support staff in secondary schools have experienced sexual harassment from colleagues and male students, including being subjected to misogynistic abuse. Twenty-five percent reported seeing sexual harassment and assault towards the girls in the school, with staff highlighting the violence then fuelled by increased online hate and misogyny by men like Andrew Tate. These statistics seem particularly poignant this week in the context of the case of Holly Newton. She was stalked and murdered by her ex-partner. She was fifteen at the time. Her mother is now campaigning to lower the age that crime is recorded as domestic abuse to recognise that young people can experience abusive relationships as well. The Home Secretary has already stressed the seriousness of this issue and has confirmed they are looking at ways of recording violent teenage relationships. In Sheffield, we know around 6,000 people seek support from domestic abuse services each year and the Sexual Violence Advisory Service sees over 600 clients a year. In both cases, around ninety percent are women and girls. These are sobering figures that demand us to act. The Labour Government has pledged to halve the amount of violence against women and girls within ten years and has made this a key mission. I'm asking all colleagues in this chamber to show leadership in tackling violence against women and girls in Sheffield and to support this motion.
Thank you. And may I be the first to congratulate you on your maiden speech? And may I be the first to congratulate you on your maiden speech? There are two proposed amendments and these are numbers three and four on the list of amendments circulated at the meeting. May I call on councillor Joe Otten to move amendment number three? He may speak for up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And congratulations to councillor Dwyer on her maiden speech. I think both the speeches have been excellent. I agree with both. I had a similar theme to councillor Russling, so I've possibly been tripped up slightly. Look, I feel the responsibility keenly, as a man, as a public figure, as a father of a son, to represent a positive vision of masculinity. We're in great danger as a world and society, aren't we, if we allow a toxic vision of masculinity to be the one that dominates? And I say that in particular reference to the election result yesterday. It is such a tragedy that if you compare the presidential candidate who was successful with the vice presidential candidate on the other side, then his version of masculinity displayed lots of masculine traits, but none of it was disrespectful or violent towards women. So you see that result as a tragedy. If young men don't have the positive vision of how to be a man that they can relate to, then that is the danger that we face. And so as a father of two daughters, I obviously want the best for them and for them to be safe. It's the young men who have to understand there is an ability and a dignity in treating women with respect, treating women as free and equal people. And that is something that is, there is a shame in not doing that. There is a shame in the behaviour, the behaviour that Mark described. Turning to our amendments. We point out that while the government has pledged to halve violence against women and girls, there is no money dedicated to this in the budget. The director of the End Violence Against Women Coalition has said, "Funding for essential life-saving support services and prevention work remains inadequate and insecure." There is a rape and sexual abuse support fund which is ring-fenced. That is due to end in March 2025. So far, there's been no commitment to restoring that. So I do ask members opposite to make representations.
Thank you councillor Otten. I've got so many speakers, I'm only being lenient with maidens. May I call on councillor Penny Baker to second the amendment? Thank you councillor Baker, two minutes please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And thank you for bringing this motion. And Matt, or Matthew? What a subject to make your maiden speech on. And I have to say to Mark, well done. Well done for bringing this to our attention. We're all sat here today with our white ribbons on, showing our respect and our support for a group and an organisation. But every single one of us has to take that further. We have to show respect, we have to give respect. We need to teach our children and we need to make sure it's taught in schools. Respect one another. It's a long time since I was at school, but we had mottos in those days. And respect was a word in most of the mottos of the schools that I went to. Shows its importance. When you respect something, you care for it, you acknowledge it, you cherish it. And that's what we should do with our relationships, whether they're family, friends or colleagues. We should show them respect. The days when the boss went in the office and saw the filing clerk bending over the desk and gave her a smack have gone. Long gone, and we need to make sure that everybody knows that. It's got to be worked together, it's got to be properly funded. Hence our plea for funding. We support your notice of motion, we're very grateful for it. We want to work so that we have got a society that we will never, ever say again, "She was only walking home". Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Baker. May I call on councillor Martin Fitz to move amendment number four? You have up to two minutes councillor Fitz. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Congratulations councillor Dwyer on your excellent first speech. And thank you to our Labour colleagues for bringing this important motion. Our amendment is a friendly one, calling to make permanent the valuable safe space in the city centre, the Safe Square. In recent years, there have been numerous calls for safe spaces in the city centre to improve safety in the night-time economy for women. The Safe Square was a positive pilot of a central safe space running from last December to September. The Safe Square was well received, in particular from women with feedback welcoming it as providing a comfort and a support network for those out in the city centre and providing an extra feeling of security. There is also a change.org petition with approximately 600 signatures calling for the Safe Square to be made permanent. Unfortunately, the funding for the pilot ended in September, leaving Sheffield without it ahead of the busy festive period. I hope that everyone supports our amendment and shows that we are serious as a council in our commitment to the safety of women and girls by supporting this important initiative and committing to work with partners on sorting a permanent solution ASAP. Thank you.
May I call on councillor Johnson to second the amendment, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Congratulations councillor Dwyer. I'm sorry, I didn't hear all your speech, I had a couple of moments outside the room. I noted that as it's mostly men speaking today, I was hoping to hear that we would have a bit of sensitivity about what we say. The issue isn't people like Andrew Tate, Donald Trump, the resistance to deal with them. The problem is more to do with all the men round here. I'm just going to go back to councillor Weatherall. You spoke very passionately on the White Ribbon Debate last year or the year before, about personal experience of doing something, standing up, telling your mate in his face that's bang out of order. And I think we do need that sensitivity. I was going to second what councillor Fitz has said about the Safe Square held in Barker's Pool. As Martin's already said, it's a really valuable service. And of course, it's there in the night-time economy, it's a partnership of people coming together. It creates a safe space, it creates refuge for people. We don't know who's going to need it. As the figures show us, it's actually been used fairly evenly by men and women. But the fact that women are often much more vulnerable in the night-time economy, not exclusively, but they can be, knowing it's there is important. It's a great example of partnership working. Even on the finance, it seems to save money. I can't possibly see how collectively we've allowed that to end. I hope we can take some steps to bring that back. Because this is all about us looking after each other. Loads of people take part in the night-time economy in the city centre, most people are great to each other and look out for each other. That is actually one of the best things about Sheffield. Overall, it's a pretty safe place. But for a lot of people, they've had experiences that show they're not safe and don't feel safe. And we just need to be mindful of that all the time. And the point about white ribbon is that is something that especially falls on men in this room and outside today. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move on to the debate on the matter. I have a number of speakers. Councillor John Wright. This is councillor Wright's maiden speech. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And thanks to councillor Dwyer for his excellent maiden speech. As this is my maiden speech, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the people of Walkley for electing me. And thanks to Tom and Laura, my fellow councillors in the ward, and to everyone who has supported my campaign. I am both pleased and saddened to give my maiden speech addressing the motion we have before us. I'm pleased to have the opportunity to support this vitally important campaign, but saddened that it's still necessary to make a stand against violence against women and girls. I've been privileged to work in social care for nearly 30 years and working with young homeless people in the 1990s. I learnt that life for some young people was more brutal and harsh than I'd ever suspected that it might be. Some of the young people we helped had experienced violence and abuse to an extent that deeply shocked me. I had imagined at that time that we'd progressed as a society and that we lived in a country where violence against women was a rare exception. I was horrified to learn that abuse and violence towards women was still so prevalent and that so many women lived in fear. I heard accounts of children fleeing homes where they were profoundly unsafe and were subject to terrifying violence and abuse. And I heard accounts of children being groomed and forced into lives of sexual exploitation. I've worked in a number of roles where I supported young people subject to this kind of violence and I learnt about the horrors they endured. And we worked to help young people escape that abuse. But I maintain the belief that we're going in the right direction and that things are getting better. Lately, this belief has been shaken. I'm deeply saddened that we are still having to make the same arguments and that violence towards women and girls is still endemic. As a parent of a grown-up daughter and a teenage son, I'm keenly aware of the rise of misogyny and hate distributed through social media. We've never been so exposed to vile views and our children and young people have never had such easy access to materials promoting hatred and minimising and excusing the impacts of violence. I believe that it's vital that everyone stands against this abuse and violence and works to end violence towards women. As men, we have an essential role. We must listen to those affected and learn about the impacts and effects of violence and abuse. We must challenge misogynistic hate and violence whenever we see it. And we must act in ways that model respectful and decent behaviours we wish to see. And we must support this campaign. It's not for us to mansplain on this issue, but it is for us to help. It's so important that we make a stand against violence and I'm proud to support the White Ribbon Campaign. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Wright and congratulations on your maiden speech. I'm now going to bring in councillor Sophie Thornton.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And congratulations councillor Dwyer and councillor Wright on your excellent maiden speeches. Indeed, what a topic. I think we all woke up to some pretty somber news from the US this morning, especially young men. A resounding amount of them clearly voted in a way that showed that the health and care of the women around them wasn't a priority for them. And that's a pattern that we're seeing globally, where young men and young women are pulling apart politically, far more than generations before them. Now, we can see that we've talked a lot about what we can do in our homes, but young men are being radicalised online and that is something that requires government action. We can see it with an incoming crisis where young men are coming together. It's running rampant already in South Korea, Japan, but it is already on our doorsteps, where they're coming together to create explicit deep fake videos of young men and young women and girls in order to intimidate, threaten them and coerce them into sex and violence. These things aren't happening behind closed doors. It's increasingly behind faceless accounts online. Women and girls are reporting violations like this to the police and being told there's nothing they can do. So empty words and platitudes aren't enough. You know, the White Ribbon Campaign is fundamentally about accountability and holding ourselves and each other to account. As a young woman, I'm so tired. We talk about this each year. And, you know, pledges, we've made a pledge. We're wearing a nice little badge, we've gone to take a picture on the town hall steps. You know, but we can't be blinded by our party colours and we have to call out when things are wrong. So will we hold the government to account for not dedicating any budget funding to the end violence against women? Will we hold the government to account to, you know, support groups like the End Violence Against Women Coalition's funding so that they can not have that be so inadequate and insecure? Will we hold the government to account when women's health is a topic met with radio silence by the government so far? You know, pledges don't save women and girls from an epidemic of violence, action will. So I'd like to see that from everyone, regardless of party colours across the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Thornton. Could I call on councillor Marouf Ruff, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This cause should not resonate deeply, sorry, this cause should resonate deeply with each and every one of us and I reaffirm my unwavering commitment to the cause. It is not only our duty and our privilege to stand united in support of the White Ribbon Campaign, but to also take concrete actions towards a safer, more equitable Sheffield. Violence against women and girls is a pervasive issue and one that crosses all boundaries of age, race and socio-economic status. It shatters lives, destroys families and scars communities. As a city, we should refuse to be passive. We should refuse to accept a city where fear shadows the footsteps of half of our population. It is important to also acknowledge the courage of survivors whose stories fuel the resolve. Their resilience reminds us that our efforts must never wane, that we must continue to push forward with policies and initiatives that protect, support and empower. Their bravery emboldens us to create an environment where every woman and girl feels safe, valued and heard. The White Ribbon Campaign in Sheffield stands as a symbol of this commitment. This campaign is more than just a gesture, it is a call to action. It is a reminder that every one of us has a role to play in this crucial fight. Sheffield has made significant strides, including but not limited to the Safe Square pilot, but our journey is far from over. We must continue to work collaboratively with organisations, communities and individuals who are dedicated to this cause. Let us remember that our commitment is not confined to campaigns or public statements. It is a daily dedication to making Sheffield a city where women and girls live free from fear. Together, we can create a future where violence is no longer a shadow that looms over this great city. Together, we can stand strong in solidarity, united in our commitment to this vital cause. I fully support the White Ribbon Campaign. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. We have come to the end of the debate, unfortunately. I did have more speakers and they were women, but unfortunately we have come to the end. So I will now move to the right to reply. Sorry? Well, who shall? Well, I had to do it in order, you know, I can't cherry pick like that. I nearly did, but I thought I would get into trouble because it would be, yeah, so. I agree, but anyway. Right. I would like now to move to, yes? Of course. Well, I've just got two women down on here that wish to speak. That isn't in the gift of myself, it's in the gift of council. Yeah. Four minutes. I haven't had anybody else indicate to speak, but isn't it the gift of myself?
Lord Mayor, we'd be happy with that, we just, yeah.
Yeah, that's great. Councillor Norris, would you like to speak, please?
Thank you, thank you councillor for allowing this time and congratulations to councillors Dwyer and Wright on their maiden speeches. One thing I wanted to say is this is not, this, every woman that I am close enough to to have had a conversation about this with, including young women, has experienced sexual harassment and sexual assault. What would be can everybody, just everyone? And I think with, you know, with Saoirse Ronan on, on... Gareon Lawton, thank you very much. What got me was, A, how much she had to fight for space to say what she wanted to say and also that the men were completely amazed. And it's just the difference of experience and it's the patriarchy. And the other thing I wanted to say is that this damages men as well. I worry for my teenage, well, he's not a teenager anymore, but I used to worry about the violence directed against him. It comes against boys, it comes between men. And violence is always weakness. Violence is the last resort when you feel like you're going to lose control. People who love and respect themselves do not try and control other people violently. And that's what we need to hold for our young men. My husband got himself a t-shirt that said, "Men are good". I didn't expect that to be a brave act, but it was, it got challenged a lot. So that's the other thing that I'd say to my male colleagues, is you are good and you need to model that respect and gentleness and listening are really, really important aspects of masculinity.
Thank you councillor Norris. And the final speaker that I had was councillor Bellfield. I didn't have anybody else indicate. Thank you.
Thank you, I feel a bit bad now about pushing this. I'm that pushy woman. This is just, I've just wanted to speak from the heart really, because this has made me think about my whole life and, you know. I was brought up by two feminist lesbians. I had two mums in the 80s and not a great time to be gay or have a gay parent. And so I... And so, I was sort of instilled in feminist beliefs and spoke a language that my friends didn't share or understand and the idea that, you know, this would be a mainstream campaign was ridiculous. Even then, though, with my mum's influence, I would talk about how, I told her once, when I grow up, I want to be a doctor. She was like, yes, you're going to go for the top, that's brilliant. And I said, quite genuinely, of course, that's when I become a man, because I believed only men could be doctors, because that's what I saw. And I suppose I'm given hope a bit by, oh, sorry, just the other thing to mention is, you know, like Alison said, you know, I had experiences of, you know, like, when I was a student, a guy who refused to leave my room because I didn't want to sleep with him and when I asked for some help from friends, they said, oh, well, you were flirting with him earlier. So, he stayed on my floor and said, when you're asleep, I'll get into bed with you. And I lay there, frozen, all night, just scared about what was going to happen. But my own friends were like, yeah, but, you know, if it had happened, they were basically saying I deserved it. The next generation give me hope, I think the internet has helped in lots of ways, there's much more expressions of diversity, of different people, and they have a language, they're able to talk about this in a way that we weren't. The internet, though, obviously, has its downside, body shaming, awful images of what women are meant to look like, and I think pornography has had a huge influence on what people expect from sexual relationships. I suppose what I wanted to say is about the future. Like, we have a responsibility to listen, to be open-minded. The idea that we know everything-
Councillor Bellfield, I will have to stop you because I've extended it, but you've made a really good point. Thank you. I am conscious we've got other motions, so I would like to go to the right to reply now to councillor Matt Rusling. Thank you, you have up to two minutes.
Thank you very much and I'd like to send my congratulations to Matt John and in a few minutes' time, I think it's, this debate has been done in the best traditions of public service in this country. And I think if I sum it up, I love Alison's husband's phrase of 'men are good', but it doesn't have to be this way. Matt and I have just spent some time downstairs with, with three young footballers from Sheffield Wednesday who came to show their support for the White Ribbon Campaign. They were a little bit bewildered at first, I think, of why they were here. When we talked to them about why they were here, what this was about, they suddenly got it and they got that it doesn't have to be this way. Sophie, I totally agree with you about the, the online points. Douglas, I thought I agree with ninety per cent of what you say, but I do think it's about the likes of Andrew Tate, because the likes of Andrew Tate manipulate the online social media world in a way that the good guys do not, cannot. That message is getting through in a way that teachers, like I used to be, parents like I am now, we do not know what our children are watching, listening to and how their minds are changing in ways that will only play out over the coming decades, in ways that are completely unimaginable, whether we're parents, not parents, parents of boys, parents of girls. So, I'm going to end with a quote from a wonderful American president, President Obama, and I'm going to disagree with it, because President Obama was quite keen of saying that the arc of history bends towards justice. I don't think the arc of history does always bend towards justice. It bends towards justice if we make it bend towards justice and if men continue to blame their problems on women, it will not.
Thank you, councillor Rusling. I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment number three, moved by councillor Jo Otten, which will be conducted using the electronic voting system unless we have unanimous support for the amendment. Councillor Milson?
Disent, Lord Mayor. We'll be voting against amendment three.
Yeah. Anybody else?
(inaudible).
No? Okay, we can run. We'll go straight to the vote. It's okay, thank you, Paul. Okay, we now have a result, we've got thirty-nine for, thirty-four against and one abstention. The amendment is carried. If we can move on to the vote for amendment number four, moved by councillor Martin Phipps. Councillor Milson?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, voting for this amendment but abstaining on parts N for November, O and P.
We will now move to the vote. Okay, we have a result, we have seventy, oh, that doesn't add up, right, seventy-two. No, we've still got one more, but somebody's registered but not voted. That's fine now, we have seventy-three for, one abstention, the amendment is carried. I'm now going to move to the vote on the substantive motion, which will be conducted using the electronic voting system unless we have unanimous support for the motion. Councillor Milson?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We're voting for the substantive motion but against as above, so against parts of amendment three that passed and abstaining on parts N, O and P of amendment four that passed.
Okay. Anybody else? No? We will now move to the vote. That's it, finally, we have, we have a result, we have seventy-three for the substantive, one abstention, the substantive motion is carried. Thank you and thank you for a really good debate, I thought it was excellent. Item number nine, notice of motion regarding a fair deal for local government, there is a maximum time limit of twenty-five minutes for this item. Mayor, sorry, councillor Bell, but-
Lord Mayor, can I ask the monitoring officer why we have allowed a Liberal Democrat amendment to their own motion, which has the effect of giving them a longer motion, far longer than the word limit, and giving them far more speakers than they should be entitled to in this debate?
Somebody responds to it?
Yeah, there is actually no limit on amendments from within the same group for a motion that has been submitted. I know that there has been a, I know that there has been a convention recently about when groups might do this and not making speeches rather than formally proposing, but there is no, no limit on, in the council procedures against this.
Well, I do feel that other groups have resisted, have not done this deliberately and have been advised not to. And as I say, it does seem to me that it leads to a very unfair imbalance of debates that sets a really bad precedent for the future, because I can't imagine why we aren't all going to do that in the future from now on, so it does need looking at.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Bell, then. I suggest that the governance committee look at this, because I think it needs looking at. Thank you. Right, can we move on to the debate? May I call on councillor Mike Leverie to move the motion, you may speak for up to three minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and congratulations to councillors Diop and Wright on their excellent maiden speeches. This council faces a thirty-four million pound overspend this year and is also facing further significant savings in two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six. As with most local authorities, the financial pressures are predominantly in adult health and social care and education, children and families. Our cost-saving initiatives are substantially on target to be delivered this year, so most of the financial pressures are outside our control. That leaves this council with no choice but to move to a priority-based budgeting model for two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six. So, we look to this government's budget for an indication of whether our challenges have been understood. Six hundred million pounds for social care, our share of that want to even cover this year's overspend of nine and a half million. The Association of Directors of Our Social Services published a report today showing eighty-one per cent of councils are overspending in adult health and social care. A total of nine hundred million pounds this year, rising to one point four billion next year. One billion pounds for SEND, an alternative precision, and we don't yet know how much will go to schools and how much retained by the local authorities. The best we can hope for is enough to cover our six and a half million overspend on home school transport. Two hundred and thirty-three million for homeless, which will translate to between two and three million for this council, a drop in the ocean. The impact of the rising national living wage and employer NI increases and threshold reduction will not be known until the December financial statement. Labour members consistently remind us of the fourteen years of austerity and the hundreds of millions of pounds of funding that this council has lost. It would seem that this Labour government is doing nothing to address the true financial challenges councils are facing now. They complain about the twenty-two million pound black hole this year's budget delivered by the Tory government that failed to even mention the deficit handed over by the outgoing Labour government in two thousand and ten. That in-year deficit was a hundred and forty-four billion. You can't tax your way out of that situation, which today would equate to a hundred and eighty billion black hole. Is it any wonder, then, that the outgoing Labour Treasury Minister, Liam Byrne, wrote that fatal note, 'I'm afraid there is no money'. Actually, it was worse than that. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Eddard. May I call on councillor Andrew Sangard to second the motion, you may speak for up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and many congratulations to councillor Dwyer and councillor Wright on their maiden speeches. Lord Mayor, it falls on me, as the longest-serving member of this authority, to say there was never a golden age for local government finance. We've just had a debate about toxic masculinity, but if you came to local government in the seventies or eighties, it was not, it wouldn't have been a good place. I mean, I've only been here since ninety-one, but in those thirty-three years, we've had twenty-eight years where the council officers have come to us and said, the financial situation of the council is in a, in a dire position, you will have to make cuts or you will have to substantially increase council tax or its predecessor. So, that's been the default position in my time, but you look back to the twenty or thirty years before that and it regularly been, been the case. The way we have, the way our constitution works is the power is sucked into Westminster, the decisions are taken in Westminster and White, rather than devolved to local government. So, that's, so don't believe anybody when they, when they tell you there was a golden age. The golden age is what we make of it in the future. Always remember that, always remember that. In terms of our, in terms of our motion, so where are we in terms of adult social care? Where we are is the Local Government Association were saying that some, like, two-thirds of authorities with adult social care will fall off a cliff in the next three to four years, if they haven't already fallen off a cliff. So, we need cross-party work on adult social care. I can see, I can see I haven't got time to talk about everything, but let's talk about buses, because taking, removing the cap from two pounds to three pounds, it's, going back from three pounds is going to have a real effect on people's pockets, it's a serious problem. The other thing is SEND, I've been here a long time, we've never got SEND right, the government needs to find a national solution. Since the legislative changes in first of two thousand and one and then in twenty fourteen, we've got a fundamental problem in SEND.
Thank you, councillor Sangard.
So, thank you, with that, Lord Mayor, I second the, the notice of motion. Thank you, Geoff. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. There are three proposed amendments and these are numbers five, six and seven on the list of amendments circulated at the meeting. May I call on councillors here and ours to move amendment number five, you may speak for up to two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd also like to say congratulations on your excellent maiden speeches, councillor Dwyer and councillor Wright. Years of austerity and privatisation have decimated our public services and pushed millions into poverty. I don't think the irony of the Lib Dems bringing a motion on a fair deal for local government is lost on any of us. This budget offers a step in the right direction to tackling hardship and poverty affecting millions of households. We all understand how austerity disproportionately impacts women, people of colour and disabled people. Our services are not overspent, they are under-resourced to meet the needs placed upon them by households forced into poverty as a direct result of decisions taken by the former government. Austerity is a false economy. Last, last Wednesday, the chancellor delivered a budget to fix the foundations after a decade and a half of stagnation. The government was handed a challenging inheritance, fourteen billion black hole with twenty-two billion of unfunded in-year spending pressures, debt at its highest since nineteen sixties, unrealistic plans for departmental spending and stagnating living standards. In spite of all these challenges, the government has delivered a budget to provide more support for councils and with poorest households gaining the most. For the first time in fourteen years, there has been support for the NHS and public services. The government has recognised the need to support and tackle homelessness, social care and SEND reform. I welcome the additional support for local government, social care and for tackling homelessness. I welcome and support the extension to the Household Support Fund, this will continue to support the most vulnerable in our communities. The additional one billion investment will give some much-needed respite to families and households worried about their future. And it's right that those most able to, should bear the cost to increase to capital gains, the abolition of non-dom taxes and increase into air-passing duties for private jets. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I know I'm a chasmile, so I'm hell of a lot. I'd like to ask councillor El Dod to second the amendment and this is councillor Dod's maiden speech. Councillor Dod.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and may I confess my congratulations on to councillors Dwyer and Wright for their important and powerful maiden speeches. I want to start mine by paying tribute to my predecessor and our former Lord Mayor, Shona Biretts. She's retired after a lifetime of public service and I know her tireless efforts, good humour and generous offers of cake were valued and still are by many in this room in Sheffield and beyond. I'm proud, yet humbled, to have been elected to serve the people of Manacastle. I come from a family of public servants, people who've dedicated their lives to education, healthcare, museums, policing, journalism and charities. I remember during one secondary school half-term going with my late grandma to the Crown Court, where after twenty-five years of working in the citizens of Baisburo, she was volunteering with their witness support service. I saw there, in a small room off a long wood-paneled corridor, a group of retired women powered by kindness and cups of tea- women powered by kindness and cups of tea, helping nervous family members of both the prosecution and defence to feel at ease, have their voices heard and ultimately to ensure that our judicial system could function effectively. Experiences like this have given me a strong sense of justice, a belief that a small number of people working together can make a big difference, and a determination and responsibility to change lives for the better. It's that which has brought me here today, and on this day of all days, I hold that belief and determination fiercely. Turning to the motion and our amendment, as it sets out, our vital public services have been chronically underfunded for years, and that presents a threat not just to council finances, but to the opportunities of our residents to thrive. So I welcome our Lib Dem colleagues bringing our attention to it, but let us never forget that in the first five years of austerity, when there were Lib Dem ministers in the Treasury, they oversaw a 40% drop in funding for local government. And last week, with Labour ministers in the Treasury, the government have agreed to a real terms increase in funding for local government with £1.3 billion extra nationally for the next financial year, and a commitment to more comprehensive reforms to return the sector to a more sustainable position from next year. That's a considerable shift from previous governments, and one that I think should give councillor Leverie the indication he wants, that the government does understand the situation we find ourselves in. The budget commits to boost investment in road, rail, school, while keeping debt on a downward path and making no changes to people's pay slips. But I wanted to pick out just a couple of things that I think have got less attention than they might have deserved. I particularly welcome the £15 million to deliver school-based nurseries to give parents access to affordable, quality childcare in their local area, as it has done for parents in schools like Pitworth and Wyburn Primary. The 30% uplift in carers allowance, then I know will be a relief to many, like a resident I spoke to in lower manner, who works her shifts around being a primary carer to her elderly parents. And finally, the changes to the rate of universal credit advances, that while they sound really technical, will save £1.2 million of the most vulnerable households at risk of falling into poverty, an extra £420 a year. In a tough economic climate, this is good news, and I look forward to working with colleagues across the chamber to deliver a balanced budget for us here in Sheffield for 2025-26 and to make progress on our common goals for this great city.
Thank you, councillor Dod. And maybe congratulate you on an excellent maiden speech. Thank you. If I could move on to councillor Douglas Johnson to move amendment number six. You may speak for up to two minutes.
Thank you again. Councillor Wright, congratulations on a maiden speech there. And councillor Dod, congratulations on yours too. Good to hear both of you speak there. I suppose the question for us now, well, we've got this motion on the national budget, is when is austerity not austerity? It looks like austerity still, and of course, the parent government department of local government, the Ministry of Housing, Communities and Local Government, is being affected by a 2% cut overall, and that sets the direction for where local government funding is going. I completely agree with that. Councillor Now is near by the point, it's not that we spend too much. Our services are under-resourced, and being local government in one of the most centralised countries in the developed world, we have a system where our resources are much controlled by central government. There's a direction here. And we talk about whether this is a budget that falls on the poorest or doesn't. The point is that it does fall on poorest. In fact, it falls on the poorest 90% of the country, because it doesn't fall on the richest. And there is a choice there. You're probably going to hear the Greens say again, 'The government could have taxed very wealthy people.' You know, we talked about taxing people with over £10 million, and a slightly higher rate of tax for people with a billion pounds. You only need a few of those to make up a significant amount of tax income, instead of putting the main tax rise through national insurance, in particular on small businesses and employers, and especially it will affect part-time workers. So of course, that may affect people, all the people who work in part-time jobs by reducing the threshold for national insurance. Absolutely, we needed to, we were part of the group calling for support for the future of council housing. There's some snippets there, but what we didn't have is that gap to fill the hole that the government imposed on us in the last two years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. May I call on councillor Mariana Elliott to second the amendment, please? You may have up to two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and congratulations to councillors Dwyer, Wright and Dod on your excellent maiden speeches. Like others in this room, I welcome the small relief to council funding delivered in the autumn budget. Certainly Angela Rayner spoke very passionately at the LGA conference and promised that she understands local government, which I don't doubt, she seemed very genuine. But her government is still tinkering round the edges, and sadly, in all our committees in Sheffield, we're still having to make heartbreaking decisions about cutting services. And I can't see any good news coming in our March council budget next year, although I'd be really happy to be corrected on that. When you delve into the government's budget, you can see vital initiatives like the rough sleeping initiative no longer have specific funding. This is obviously really, really concerning and a step backwards with devastating consequences here in Sheffield and elsewhere. So, but of course, there's no point being critical without offering solutions. As Greens may have mentioned before, we'd like to see a tax on wealth to raise billions to support our public services, and it's really disappointing that we see more of a focus on taxing work than taxing wealth in the new budget. I just want to make a quick point on right to buy, because this is so relevant to us here in Sheffield, and it's not been touched on. Keeping 100% receipts makes absolute sense. It's crazy to think that this hasn't been the case up until now. In my ward, Gleedless Valley, people were told that their houses would be demolished and new council houses would be built in 2017. Not one council house has been built since then, partly due to right to buy. The council quoted £250,000 to build one new home, which could then be bought privately and removed from public use forever. We're in a housing crisis, and it is clear that right to buy needs to be completely abolished.
Elliott, thank you. May I call on councillor Joe Otten to speak to move amendment number seven?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Formally move amendment seven, and can I congratulate councillors Wright and Dod on their maiden speeches? Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. May I call on councillor Sue Alston?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Formerly move amendment seven, second amendment seven, and again, congratulations to all those people making their maiden speeches.
Thank you. Now, there's been a lot, hasn't there? We can now move on to the debate on the matter. If I could call councillor Dale.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and I would like to congratulate councillors Dwyer, Wright and Dod on your engaging maiden speeches. It would be remiss of me not to mention children's services as being the lead member of children in Sheffield, and I'd like to address item E in the Lib Dem motion. And while no one can disagree that the Education, Children and Families Policy Committee have got a shortfall in this year's budget, we must acknowledge the reasons for that shortfall and the work taking place across the Directorate whilst balancing the budget and meeting demand while still providing quality provision for our children and their families. I would like to highlight that in Sheffield, whilst placement costs are high, as they are across the country, we are noticeably close to the budget, which is unique across the country at the moment. What I do need to stress are the areas of pressure that we do have, as one-liners in motions are not helpful. We are struggling with the issue of no recourse to public funds, primarily on accommodation costs for families with children. We have discussed many times in this chamber that bed and breakfast accommodation is not suitable options for these families, so we must place these families in housing. Our children with disabilities have high costs for children's disabilities, and the amount of spending is exasperated by the cuts to funding from the ICB. We've mentioned home-to-school transport. We've had an additional 1,000 children accessing home-to-school transport since 2022. Colleagues across the floor who sit on the Education, Children and Families Policy Committee are aware of an ongoing piece of work within power, where an options paper is currently being developed that will be presented at our December committee. We have an issue around exclusions from schools, and currently, the pupil referral unit is at capacity, and the council have a statutory responsibility to provide education for those children. Looking forward, I am really looking forward to finding out more information from Brigid Phillipson around the SEND reforms, as we cannot just pay our way out of that problem.
Thank you, councillor Dale. Thank you. I'd now like to move to councillor Shafak Mohammed. You have up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and congratulations to all colleagues who made their maiden speeches. I'm going to speak broadly around not just all our noticeable motion, but also the amendments in particular. And actually, you know, Douglas did make a point around, this is about choices, and, you know, people were looking forward to this Labour budget, the first one after 14 years. Lots of promises were being made, lots of concerns were being expressed in this chamber about, what was it, £856 per head that's been lost, and often described as unnecessary cuts, ideological cuts, whatever. So naturally, people felt, well, we've got a Labour government now, we've got all these Labour MPs across South Yorkshire, massive majority nationally, we're going to get that money back. That's what the expectation was. So to see that actually, there's not much coming back this way, and actually, we as a city council have got huge challenges. In-year overspends are huge. Trying to settle the next year's budget is going to be a real challenge, and this is where you come into it. You know, you have the ear of your MPs now, you have a member of the cabinet as a city's MP. You've got to be able to talk to them and say, 'We're in a situation, we're not quite Birmingham, we're not, but we've got to have financial support, because we're going to have challenges in children's services, we're still going to have challenges in adult.' And part of it is that if government makes some decisions, it has knock-on effects. For example, you know, we had this conversation, I asked this emergency question of councillor Hunt around the issues of what the NI increase will have for, and I said, people in care providers, in particular hospices, and councillor Hunt talked about businesses. Well, often, these are charities and community organisations, and if they fold, then the expectation will be that some of those services that these organisations provide will fall upon us, so it will have a knock-on effect. That's why you've got to speak to your government to say, 'Some of these changes, in particular around NI, whether it's hospice care, whether it's community organisations, are going to have huge...' If Penny was here, her sister works for a charity up north, they're facing £70,000, £80,000 expenses.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We have now come to the end of the debate. May I offer a right to reply to the move of the motion, councillor Mike Leverie? You may speak for up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Yes, some interesting contributions into the debate. When government push out bid numbers, the thing to remember is, you just look at 1% of that number, and that's what's coming to Sheffield as a rough rule of thumb, because that's the way it works. So what we're getting is not a lot. It certainly won't cover the sort of levels of overspend that we're going through now. The £27 million reserve set aside for this year will not balance the budget, so we're going to have to be going back and looking at our reserves to see if we can find enough money to balance this year's budget. And critically, if we can't balance next year's, once again, we have to go back into reserves to find out ways of doing it. Councillor Dod mentioned the 40% drop in funding in the first five years since 2010. Oh, yes, that is absolutely right, against a £144 billion deficit that was faced at that moment in time. So it's no surprise, you can't tax your way out of that situation. I agree with councillor Johnson, austerity continues, and it's going to continue for some time. It's no good trying to use different words, we are in an austerity situation. Don Dale's right, the challenges in children's are extensive, but the money we're going to get ain't going to meet those challenges. And finally, don't be surprised if this government lifts a 5% cap on council tax. So the local councils will be pressured to increase to balance the budget. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Leverie. I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment number five, moved by councillor Aheera Nowz, which will be conducted using electronic voting system unless we have unanimous support for the amendment. Dismissed. Was that you, councillor Otten? Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, Lord Mayor, in voting for, we are against P and Q.
Lord Mayor, thank you. And so in voting for, we are voting against Q.
Thank you. Voting in part, Sir Lord Mayor. While voting for, we are voting against paragraphs P to S, V and X.
Thank you. We can now move to the vote. Okay, we have a result, 74/4 abstention, which is carried in part, paragraph Q is lost. I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment number six, which is moved by councillor Douglas Johnson, which will be conducted using electronic voting system unless we have unanimous support. Councillor Milson. Okay, councillor Otten.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In abstaining, we are against P and for R.
Nobody else? Okay, we'll move to the vote. Thank you. Okay, amendment number six is lost, but paragraph R has been carried. Yeah, it's 17/4, 33 against 25 abstentions. Amendment number seven, I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment number seven, moved by councillor Joe Otten, which will be conducted using electronic voting system unless I have unanimous support. Councillor Milson, dissent. Okay, nobody else? Okay, I will move to the vote. Okay, we have a result, 41/4, 34 against, one abstention is carried in full. I'm now going to move to the vote on the substantive motion, which will be conducted using electronic voting system unless we have unanimous support for the motion. Councillor Milson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We're abstaining on the substantive motion, but voting...
We're abstaining on the substantive motion but voting for the parts of amendment five which passed and voting against any parts of six and seven that passed.
Councillor Hes, sorry.
Thank you. Whilst voting for, we are voting against those paragraphs of amendment five that we voted against originally. I know one of them was lost, but there were others that carried.
Councillor Otten.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In voting for, we are against the Labour P again.
Any more? Okay, well, we'll now move to the vote. Okay, we're missing one member. Okay, I'll call it. It's 40 for the substantive, 35 abstentions, the motion is carried. We'll now move on to item number 10, which is notice of motion regarding thank you to Sheffield foster carers. There is a maximum time limit of 25 minutes for this item. May I call on councillor Dondell to move the motion?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In forwarding this motion, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank our foster carers and our kinship carers across the city for ensuring that our children stay close to their families and for creating safe places where our children feel like they belong and that I welcome the recent government announcement of £44 million to support kinship and foster carers. I would like to remind members in this chamber that as community parents, we should be doing all that we can to encourage and support the campaign of this council to recruit new foster carers from within our own communities. I would also like to celebrate the success of our kinship care ambitions. It is in the best interest of our children to remain within their families at times of difficulty wherever possible and to be repatriated to their families at a time that is good for them and where appropriate. I am glad to say that we are currently assessing 19 new foster carers and 90, that's nine zero kinship carers. And in addition, I've just approved eight supported lodgings carers. It would not be possible to speak about the fostering service without recognising the important work that our care experienced young residents do. And I'd like to take this opportunity to thank our voice and influence team for their work ensuring that the voices of care experienced young people helps to influence our work. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Dale. May I call on councillor Laura McLean to second the motion? You have up to two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to start by congratulating councillors Dwyer and Dodd and my ward colleague councillor Wright on their excellent maiden speeches. In seconding our motion today, I also wanted to highlight the role of kinship carers. Research shows that where children can stay with a family member, it really improves their wellbeing and the chance of better outcomes for them. I was talking this week to a resident from Walkley Ward, the ward I represent, who is a kinship carer. They explained that when they first took on this role, that it was a real challenge adjusting. There were new unfamiliar systems to navigate, appointments to attend, housing issues to resolve, and then learning how to best support the children emotionally as they adapted to their new situation. But they told me that they ultimately took on providing kinship care as they wanted to provide a safe space for the children to grow up in, keeping them within the family and out of the wider care system. Our motion today asks members to thank our kinship carers for the sacrifice they make and the commitment they show in opening up their homes at a time of crisis in their family, providing hope and a stable, safe place for their young relatives. As councillor Dwyer just mentioned, last week the government announced £44 million in the budget to support kinship and foster carers. We welcome this and hope that this increase in support will entitle me to more people feeling equipped to step forward and become carers, foster carers. As this motion acknowledges, we know we need more in our city. As councillors, it is important that we remember that we should do all within our power to raise the profile of fostering in Sheffield so that more children and young people have a safe and loving home. In all the work we do across our various committees, this motion reminds us that it's important to ensure the voices of care experienced young people are heard by the council so that they shape the work and policies we create, remembering all the time that this council recognises care experience as a protected characteristic. Finally, I ask all members to come together to support this motion, to thank fostering kinship carers across our city for all they do in offering a good start and ultimately the hope of a stable and successful future to children and young people in Sheffield. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor McLean. There are two proposed amendments and these are number eight and nine on the list of amendments circulated at the meeting. May I call on councillor Mohammed Marouf to move amendment number eight? You may speak for two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. May I begin by congratulating councillors Dwyer, Wright and Dodd for their excellent speeches today. Lord Mayor, the work foster carers do is a vocation, a passion for helping young people in their time of need. Their work truly helps transform lives. We all applaud and recognise this army of wonderful people from all backgrounds that open their households to give young people care, empathy and emotional support at a difficult time in their lives. It's absolutely right to celebrate foster carers, the council's foster caring team and everyone included in the care sector. We are all proud of the work we do. Unfortunately, as a theme with Labour motions, thanking is fine, but the motion actually ignores challenges faced by foster carers. We need to go further to support foster carers, including monetary. The work done by foster carers is significant but becomes even more so for young people as they reach the age of 18. The National Audit Office report care leavers' transition to adulthood identifies poorer life outcomes for care leavers as a longstanding problem, which then creates high public cost including mental health, employment, education, justice, the policing services. Foster carers in this sector really do need to be supported. In moving this amendment, Lord Mayor, I would like to protest on a point of order, if I may. The removal of our clause I around skills funding for care leavers. It seems outrageous, Lord Mayor, that members can be gagged. This, in my opinion, is unprecedented and not a good precedent, Lord Mayor. Thank you.
May I call on councillor Rebecca Atkinson to second the amendment? You have up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and congratulations to councillors Dwyer, Dodd and Wright on your maiden speeches. I wanted to reiterate our thanks to foster carers and kinship carers. They are residents in this city that often fly under the radar, are insane heroes and we absolutely rely on them, as do those whose life circumstances mean that they need their support. It's very easy to be thankful, but alongside our acknowledgement of the work that fostering kinship carers do, we must also ensure that we provide adequate support, are aware of barriers that exist that prevent prospective carers coming forward or mean that carers are lost to the system. Significantly, policies such as staying put make a huge difference to those in care and enable carers to support young adults as they transition to independence. The Centre for Homeless Impact report in 2024 states that staying put represents a significant opportunity to reduce homelessness among care leavers. As a local authority, we must remember our continuing responsibility to some of the most vulnerable in our city. We can always do more and we should do more to support carers and care leavers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lord Mayor, Lord Mayor, a member's raised a point of order in the speech and talking about members being gagged. Can we have an explanation of where this...
It was discussed at the WIPs meeting, councillor Fox.
I'm not a WIP, Lord Mayor.
So I would have presumed that the WIPs would have gone back and reported it to their members.
Not that I'm aware of, Lord Mayor.
Well, that's not for me to answer to.
Well, surely it's for officers, Lord Mayor.
Could somebody please respond from the front, please, on this?
It was raised as a point of order, but a point of order has to be an allegation that the PCR, the have been breached. I wasn't quite sure as to what was alleged to have been breached in there, to raise it as an actual point of order.
Thank you. Let's move on. Okay. I'm going to... May I call on pounds councillor Peter Gilbert to move amendment number nine? You may speak for up to two minutes. Councillor Gilbert.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and congratulations councillors Dwyer, Wright and Dodd on their maiden speeches. I'm going to be brief. I think we all thank Sheffield's foster caring community. Clearly, it's an essential service. But the reason I bring my amendment is because from talking with some of the foster care community, they found this motion insulting. So please support my amendment.
Thank you councillor Gilbert. If I could move on to councillor Douglas Johnson to second the amendment.
Thank you. I think at this time of day, I'll just suggest that we second the amendment here and I'll just endorse what councillor Gilbert has said with his direct knowledge there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we are right at the guillotine. So thank you very much. I'm really pleased that everybody got to speak on their amendments. I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment number eight. Oh, sorry, I'll further right to reply for councillor Dondell.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I understand everyone's frustration, as I am frustrated as well. With regards to the amendments today, I would like to highlight the fact that the staying put policy was brought to the trio meeting on the 30th of July and to an all-member knowledge briefing on the 17th of August, and no members on our committee from any party raised any issues in those meetings. It was then meant to go to our policy committee this week, where we deferred that to December so that we can listen further to our foster carers. What I would like to do in this instance, bearing in mind we are doing much transformation work in Education, Children and Families Policy Committee, I would like to offer the Liberal Democrats a knowledge briefing and the Greens if you would like, all members to understand the difference between our connected carers, kinship carers, foster carers, supported lodgings and staying put providers. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheffield community councillors are not a member of that policy committee and have not therefore had the opportunity to have any briefings.
I'm perfectly happy to provide a briefing if you would like to speak to officers, that's absolutely fine. Thank you.
I'm now going to move to the vote on the amendment number eight, moved by councillor Mohammed Marouf, which will be conducted using the electronic voting system unless we have unanimous support. Councillor Milson. Just run the vote, please. Sorry, councillor.
Sorry, I was...
No, it's fine, don't worry.
So in voting for, we are abstaining on I.
We can move to the vote then. So that's it, that's it, that's it. The dancing girls, staying put. Yeah, so we're going to change the policy. Took it down. Because if you change the wording and then you kind of... And it's like, oh, you can't hear us.
The points are all about the... The points are being took out.
The point's about being taken out, but the point of order wasn't... No. We've got one, just one vote needed. We're trying to, we're trying to gag them, which is a great idea. And of course, we're going to put it on the motion. I said no. And officers postponing discussion or decision so that we can't raise our council with gagging to defend freedom of speech. What job do we...
I'm planning, I can, it's on the, on the plan.
Going to call it. 37 for the amendment, 35 abstentions, it is carried. I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment number nine, which is moved by councillor Peter Gilbert, which will be conducted using electronic voting system unless we have unanimous support for the amendment. Councillor Milson, dissent. Councillor Milson. Anybody else? I don't want to close it before... Okay, we'll run to the vote. Thank you. Registered but not voting, I'm going to call it. Okay. 38 for the amendment, 35 abstentions, the amendment is carried. Going to move to the vote on the substantive motion, which will be conducted using electronic voting system unless we have unanimous support for the motion. And from councillor Milson.
In voting for the substantive motion, we're still abstaining on the parts of amendments eight and nine which passed.
Anybody else? No? Okay, let's go to the vote, please. No, that was before, but thank you. Thank you ever so much, ma'am. I'm going to call it. On the substantive motion, 71 for, no abstention, one abstention. It's great. The substantive is carried. We'll now move on to item number 11, which is minutes of the previous council meeting. It is proposed that the minutes of the ordinary meeting of the council held on the 2nd of October 2024 be approved as a true and accurate record. Is that motion formally moved? Formally, Lord Mayor. Formally seconded?
Formally, Lord Mayor.
Item number 12, members of the council, bodies representatives to serve on other bodies and related issues. It is moved by councillor Mary Lee, seconded by councillor Joe Otten, that approval be given to the change in the membership of committees and other... given to the change in the membership of committees and other council bodies, and the appointment of representatives to serve on external bodies and related issues as detailed in the schedule circulated at the meeting. Councillor Lee?
Formally, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Otten?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
I'm now going to move to the vote on the motion. Is the motion agreed? Agreed. Motion is carried. That closes today's meeting. Thank you very much for meaningful debates, and enjoy the rest of your evening.